Okay. Call is being ordered and ask the clerk to call roll. What?
Councilmember Sanders.
Here.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Here.
Mayor Gatewood.
Garrett, I'm mute.
Should we unmute? We can hear him.
I'm getting it. I'm almost got this. Stacy, can you please read the video announcement and playback schedule?
I will. I'm just checking with our assistant city clerk to see that we've started our meeting and we're good to go, and she is yes for our live stream. The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, January 21st at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, January 24th at 6:00 p.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
All right, can I please have Mica do the pledge of allegiance? And ask everyone to stand if you can.
Sure. Pledge allegiance to the flag. To the United States of America. Which is stand. Which is stand. One nation, one nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty, liberty, and justice for all.
Right. Is Paul Allen from Sacramento Japanese United Methodist Church able to do our invocation?
Paul, I've just unmuted you. Can you hear us? Hold on just a second.
Paul's still muted.
Paul Allen, are you there with us?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can. Oh, good. I can't. I can see you, but you can't see me.
I can put you on. I could put you on the screen just a moment.
No, that's okay. I know what I look like. Thank you, and good evening. I'm sorry to have held your meeting up. By way of introduction, the Protestant denomination out of which I grew prayed a lot. We knew our place in the scheme of things. Generally, our prayers are humble, approaching our Creator apologetically. We wish never to interrupt or inconvenience the Almighty. We had several classifications of prayers just to be certain pray yore and pray ye knew its proper objective. For example, we had benedictions, invocations, sermons in a bottle. That was the pastoral prayer. Calls to prayer, which was praying for a good prayer, and the always popular prayer after the sermon, the prayer to summarize the sermon's critical points and to sweep up any forgotten ideas. Today's, today, I was a pastoral minister. I speak. I know what I speak. Today, I've been asked to offer an invocation, an all-purpose call upon the deity to satisfy an immediate need. You may look down, look up, eyes open or closed, but its service is useful if you'll interrupt your current turn of thought for about 30 minutes. Shall we pray? Creator and Sustainer, we know, you know so many more things than we can imagine, especially why we're here. For the next period of time, we ask you to focus our will on important business. Keep our distractions minimal. Referee our discussions. Guide us through the right and the true. Thump us on the noggin should we become too caught up in the why and forget the what. Allow us to cast our nets upon troubled and distant waters, and please forgive our mixed metaphors. So be it, and amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Paul.
Amen, thank you.
Wonderful.
All right, Maria. Can we go have a presentation from the communication department?
Garrett, can I make a, just a timing suggestion if the council will entertain it? I'm looking at a really, really packed agenda, some of which I'm expecting to have a lot of public comments for. So I was wondering if we could let some folks know that maybe item four, we could, well, 12.4, excuse me, if we could continue that to our next meeting or to a workshop in the not-too-distant future. Because I would hate for us to get to that item and the people have been, the people that have been asking for that item to be talked to is something that ends up being kind of rushed through at the end because we have some very lengthy items prior to that. So would anybody have an objection to that? Linda, I see you talking, but you're unmuted.
Which item?
12.4.
The mobile discussion. The mobile park.
I think they deserve a bottle of conversation and not something that we try to get through in five or 10 minutes at the end of the night after what is probably, considering the emails we've gotten today, going to be a couple of very lengthy items prior to it. Not to mention, we have some government updates from our lobbyists as well. So I think we have a pretty packed agenda, and I, there's not imminent action on that to come. That was really an information item that we've been asking for.
Cyrus, if that works for staff, I would support that.
And I also, I'd like those folks to understand that.
Yeah, counsel, it's not, this item is not time-sensitive, and it can be postponed or delayed to another meeting.
Okay, so I second that. So can I get one more person? That's three.
You're here.
Okay.
Thank you.
12.4, it's very important to us. We have some very interesting stuff, and we will go over that at the next meeting.
So for those of you that might be waiting or submitted a card for 12.4, just hang with us, but you probably, if you're not interested in the rest of the agenda, you don't need to wait around for that one. And we'll get to it.
Adam, did you say something?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And I would just say that both the planning department and the city attorney's office appreciate the input from the community that we received contributing to this report, and we certainly welcome additional perspectives as we wait for our conversation with the council.
Okay, thank you. And again, I apologize for.
From Simon and Company.
Yeah, for the good of all to have a good conversation on that item, let's do it.
All right, so presentation by Joe Gonzalez's son, Simon. Go ahead and take over.
Good evening. I wanted to introduce our advocacy partners. Maria Tonystead, Communications and Public Affairs Director. And Mayor and Council, I'm happy to be here this evening to introduce our partners on the legislative front, both at federal and state level. They're going to provide you with a brief legislative update from the past year as well as a look into what 2021 might bring. First, you're going to hear from Jason Gonzalez with Joe A. Gonzalez and son. And as most of you know, the Gonzalez team has been our state-level advocacy partner for the past four years. After Jason, you will hear from Jen Covino with Simon and Company. And I believe, as most of you know, Simon and Company has represented us in Washington, D.C. since shortly after City Hall. So as always, both Jen and Jason are happy to answer any questions you might have. And with that, I will let Jason provide the first update.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, and thank you, Maria, for the introduction. My name is Jason Gonzalez. As Maria mentioned, we have had the pleasure and honor of representing the city of Rancho Cordova since 2016, July of 2016. I will be brief in the interest of your time and recognizing the lengthy agenda. As you know, the legislature adjourned on August 31st. Signing Day was the last year of a two-year session. It was also a year that, like all other industries, had the COVID complications. The legislature was forced to take nine weeks of unplanned and unscheduled recess. Members were forced to curtail their legislative proposals, their bill package, if you will. And consequently, rather than seeing the 1,500 plus or minus, all very much needed bills we see each year, we saw 428 bills actually make it to Governor Newsom, of which he signed, excuse me, 372 of the 428 and vetoed 56 bills. So again, the members were forced to curtail their legislative package, and many of the bills that, there was about 2,200 in March that were alive, that many of the other 1,500 we anticipate will come back this upcoming session. Couple of themes from the governor's veto messages that were consistent. Most bills that had a potential impact, particularly an ongoing impact on the state general fund. The governor started to sharpen the pencil as a result of ongoing budget pressure from COVID and the projections for the future years, the out-years. As well as, there was a theme of my administration is already working on this, therefore, please don't prescribe to us how to do our job. And that, that may create some undercurrent between the governor and legislative leadership, but we do know those conversations and negotiations going forward have ramped up in large part because March of 2020, the governor had an executive order and was able to do quite a bit by way of administrative authority and executive orders, not the least of which, we worked with the administration to provide for Zoom meetings we thought would be for March or April. We did not anticipate, and I don't think anyone did, we'd be having these type of meetings moving into 2021. That said, the legislature also is continuing to work remotely. There's been a lot of political unrest, as you know, at the national level and state levels. And just this week, there was a considerable amount of testimony that was very threatening in a budget committee. So consequently, the Speaker and the President Pro Tem have closed their galleries and public access to the Capitol for at least the near term. Very briefly, the November elections, as you know, all 80 Assembly members were up as well as 20 of the 40 state senators. We also had a series of 12 initiatives on the ballot, not the least of which was Prop 22. And that initiative was what I would characterize as, well, it was in response to Dynamex and AB5, but I would characterize it as labor and legislative democratic leadership versus the gig economy. And the Ubers and Lifts and the tech industry spent a national record $226 million on that initiative. The reason I bring it up is it's already heading to courtrooms. It could have an impact going forward for any other future exemptions. And, you know, the ongoing battle, what undercurrent will there be for perhaps tree trimming services or other services that many local governments contract out for? So we will continue to watch that issue closely, but it's definitely going to have lingering effects going forward even after the November 3rd election. Very briefly, the legislature, the assembly previously had 61 Democrats. After November 3rd, there's 60 Democrats, 19 Republicans, and one independent. The Assembly Democrats lost the 38th Assembly District. It was held by Assembly Member Kristi Smith. She ran for Congress. And no, they, well, there were so many Democrats on the ballot to fill that seat. Not, no Democrat made the runoff, and therefore, the Democrats lost that seat. Quickly moving to the State Senate, as I mentioned, 20 of the 40 seats were up. The Senate will have 30 Democrats, nine Republicans, and one vacancy. The vacancy is the 30th Assembly District, sorry, the 30th Senate District that was held by former Senator Holly Mitchell, the former Budget Chair, who has now been elected to the L.A. County Board of Supervisors. Just worth noting, the L.A. County Board of Supervisors, for the first time, will be comprised of all female supervisors, all five. They used to call them the Five Kings. I guess they're now the Five Queens. So the 30th Senate District will now have a vacancy. Assembly Member Kamala Perdub has announced her intention to run for the 30th Senate seat, which will then trigger a special election in the Assembly. We'll also see a special election for Assembly Member Shirley Weber's seat. As you know, she's been appointed to replace Alex Padilla as the Secretary of State. So the long and short of it is, just when we thought elections were over, we will likely see quite a few special elections, and we will definitely see some possible changes or likely changes at state agency levels because there's a number of folks that are agency secretaries and others that may be likely joining the Biden-Harris administration. A couple of quick dates or key dates to focus on. January 22nd is the deadline for members to submit bill proposals to legislative council. February 19th is the deadline to submit bills or introduce the bills. As I mentioned, we're in the first year of a two-year session. We'll likely see another 1,500 to 2,000 bills introduced. The governor, as you know, introduced the budget just prior to the January 10th deadline. It's a record-breaking $227.2 billion budget. And much to most people's surprise, the governor's budget, it projects a $34 billion surplus and reserve fund, even despite the COVID pandemic and the impact it's had on the state general fund. That said, the budget projections, budget year plus one in the out-years does show a deficit, so the governor will have to be very careful on how he manages the $34 billion in reserves and surplus. The one key thing that the governor's budget did not include, and that was any relief for local governments. And what we're hearing from the Department of Finance and the administration is they are optimistic and hopeful that a federal package, the Biden proposal, as I understand it, could include $350 billion in state and local government relief. And California is hopeful that they will be well-positioned to receive a significant portion of that funding. But I'll leave the details of that to Jen as it's, as I say, you know, the federal government, we don't lobby a foreign government. It's a little foreign process to me. We, I received a briefing from the Speaker and Pro Tem this morning as part of the Institute of Governmental Advocates. I sit on the board, and Speaker Rendon and Pro Tem Atkins provided an update. Both leaders had in their top three priorities, housing and homelessness. And as you know, we saw 30-plus bills seeking to curtail local government's land use authority this last legislative session. Pro Tem Atkins, who is a strong advocate for housing, affordable housing, and has a keen interest in homelessness, says she expects all those bills to be back. Some of those bills, not the, most notably, there was a proposal that would allow for ministerial approval of duplexes as long as you had 4,000 square feet in your backyard, irrespective of access from the public safety or emergency vehicles. Those type of proposals, I think local governments and our firm will take a, have a watchful but critical eye of because the one-size-fits-all approach in Sacramento doesn't typically work for small and medium-sized cities, which is all of our coin cities and, you know, and for the city of Rancho Cordova. And then lastly, moving to the governor's office, like with many administrations, Governor Newsom has had some key staff members depart. His Chief of Staff, Ann O'Leary, is expected to be returning to Washington, D.C., again likely to be part of a Biden-Harris administration. Ann has been replaced by Jim DeBoo, who's a longtime Capitol staffer, most recently was a political consultant. I've known Jim for 30 years. He's great to work with, and I think he'll be helpful for local governments and ourselves as we grapple with the legislative package. The legislative secretary, the governor's appointee that oversees all bills within the horseshoe, as we call it, within their administration, Anthony Williams, has left, and Anthony has been replaced by Angie Way, who is a former, well, she's most recently been an advisor to Governor Newsom, but she, prior to that, she was a long-term Chief of Staff for the California Labor Federation. And Angie is also been great to work with, but she'll be heading up the legislative unit for Governor Newsom. So with that, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the mayor, the council, and your executive team. Maria, specifically, it's a pleasure to represent your city. It's an honor. It's one we take very seriously. And we would not be successful without your leadership and the communication and briefings we receive from your executive staff. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to present. I'm happy to answer any questions, and Happy New Year. I hope the sequel to 2020 comes to an end sooner than later. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Any questions from my, David, go ahead.
You know, I see the continued focus on homelessness, and that absolutely ought to be one of the top issues in the state, dealing with that crisis that we feel in every jurisdiction in the state. Do you see any additional focus on mental health or addiction issues as part of that? Because, you know, local jurisdictions on the ground, particularly among the chronically homeless population that we see the most often, that probably causes the most disorder in our, in our communities, those are enormous factors. And all too often, we're talking about a whole different kind of homelessness as opposed to that. Do you see any kind of movement at the state level to focus more on that sort of, the root cause for the chronic homeless?
It's a great question, and thank you for it. Yes, I think it's a very difficult issue. As you know, conservatorship, the ability to remove folks from the street against their will because there is a significant population that doesn't want to leave. That issue, the balance between conservatorship and individual rights has been one the legislature's grappled with. They have had pilot programs in San Francisco and Los Angeles to enable local governments to have that authority. And that conversation, I think, will be a key piece of the homelessness discussion. Also, allowing local governments perhaps to voluntarily partner with your other neighboring local agencies, whether it be a JPA or banding together to secure some of the funding because with the population thresholds that have been arbitrarily part of the program's 200,000 population, we've met with Melinda Gant at this business consumer services agency and advocated for, if a city doesn't meet that population threshold, could a coalition of cities come together and receive some of those funds? Because the homeless population doesn't necessarily know or care about local jurisdictional boundaries. So if you move them out of one park, they may end up in the neighboring city. So I think the balance between allowing locals to get the funding and conservatorship will be part of the discussion.
Jason, other question. Do we have a plan, a pathway for the priority for small business owners during COVID?
The governor put out a list of priorities that we sent out to your executive team this afternoon. It literally came out this afternoon. It was part of a letter to President-elect Biden. And small business relief was one of the top priorities for Governor Newsom and one of the focused requests, if you will. The governor has proposed $400 million for small business relief as part of his January budget proposal. That said, the legislature did push back. As an example, there was $1.5 billion for electric vehicle charging and EV purchases. The legislature thought it was inappropriate, at least thus far, to spend three times the amount on vehicle charging versus small business relief. So I think the $400 million will be increased, and we're optimistic, perhaps, the new administration.
So it's $1 billion plus, 400 million?
It's, at this time, it's $450 million the governor's proposed. I think that number will be augmented significantly by the legislative leadership. And I would expect it to may revise. You'll likely see the governor propose a larger number.
Yes, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? Because we all have been through the same kind of cycle, well, the same process. It's been governor's budget in January, may revise, maybe they adopt it by June. But the timeline this year that they're suggesting, they're like within weeks, correct?
Yes, and the June 15th adoption will take place, as we've seen in the last few years, because of what we call the paycheck provision. As you may recall, the Voters Pass Initiative, that says you forfeit your pay if you don't have a June 15th budget. So the legislature will have a June 15th budget. But to your point, we will likely see trailer bills continue far beyond June 15th, as we've seen in last year's session. You know, taxes weren't due until July as a result of COVID. And I think lingering impacts will continue. So we'll, I would expect budget proposals to go throughout the process.
I know, I hear your philosophy. I'm asking, is there any chance that like there's a February adoption of something?
I appreciate the question. Yes, absolutely. As a matter of fact, the Speaker and the Pro Tem, the governor proposed early action items. For example, extending the moratorium on evictions, landlord protections for landlords, but also relief for landlords as part of that proposal. The COVID items, I think we will see in February, if not sooner.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Maria, go ahead with the next question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up, we have Jen Covino with Simon and Company.
Good evening, everyone. Maria, thank you so much for the introduction. Cyrus, thank you for the continued partnership. To the mayor and council, I appreciate having the opportunity to brief you all tonight on current federal developments here in Washington, D.C. And there are plenty, as it is a historic evening here in the nation's capital. As you know, tomorrow, President-elect Joe Biden and Vice President-elect Kamala Harris will be sworn in amongst probably one of the darkest settings we've encountered in our history. Here in D.C., we are under a National Guard, are overseeing the inaugural events tomorrow. A little bit earlier tonight, I sent you all an update with the schedule of events, if you all care to watch and participate virtually throughout the day tomorrow. As you know, President-elect Biden is bringing a number of Californians to his cabinet, including Health and Human Services Designated Secretary Xavier Becerra, as well as personnel from the state of California, many of which had previously worked with your junior senator Kamala Harris before she was appointed for the number-two position. One name I would like to get you all familiar with in the weeks ahead is Julie Chavez Rodriguez, who will be serving as the Director of the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs within the White House. It's quite important for you all to get to know her in the weeks ahead as she's going.
Wait, lost her. Oh, you froze there for a minute.
Sorry about that.
About 15 seconds ago, 10 seconds ago.
Sorry about that. Another.
There he goes. It's very important to get to know her because.
She is going to be your daily liaison for mayors and council members within the White House. We'll want to make sure that you are familiar with her as soon as possible. Another key hire of personnel within the White House is going to be Eduardo Cisneros, who will be joining the White House as the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs for COVID relief in particular. So there is going to be a bifurcation of responsibilities within the White House, which really illustrates sort of the emphasis this administration is going to have on a full-fledged assault against the virus in the first 100 days. Over on Capitol Hill, as you know, the election revils in Georgia have left us with an evenly split Senate with 50 Democrats, including the two independents who caucus with the party, and the 50 Republicans. In this sort of scenario, typically, the majority goes to the Vice President's party, and so the Democrats will be holding the chamber, and Chuck Schumer will be serving as the Senate Majority Leader moving forward. He met with Senate Minority Leader Mitch McConnell earlier today to work through, to negotiate a rules package around how they will choose to govern, given the circumstances. Over in the House of Representatives, it is a similar narrow margin that Speaker Nancy Pelosi has with her Democratic majority in the House. And so legislative business will be complicated as we go forward this year. And so I preface that all to say, President-elect Biden has a remarkably aggressive agenda for the first 100 days, and you will see evidence of that starting tomorrow as he enters office. First of all, last week, the president-elect made a primetime address to introduce the concept of a $1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan. It is the president-elect's hope to move that bill through Congress using a normal legislative process. Here in Washington, D.C., bills require a vote of 60 votes in the Senate to get through without filibuster. And so as of today, the president-elect is hoping that he will be able to garner. And so as of today, the president-elect is hoping that he will be able to garner support amongst a number of moderate Republicans uh, to meet that 60-vote threshold. However, I do not foresee it being that easy of a process to move this historic piece of legislation through. And so as a last resort, Democrats could choose to use the budget reconciliation process, which is only appropriate for bills that have, uh, revenue implications as it relates to the budget, to appropriations, to tax policy and other related measures. So if, if Democrats are unable, uh, in terms of securing bipartisan support for the American Rescue Plan on Capitol Hill, they would need to resort to other measures later in the springtime. We have March 14th as a potential legislative milestone that could force some action because unemployment insurance provisions that were just passed in the most recent relief package will be expiring as of March 14th. And so that's really the next forcing mechanism we have here, uh, that will need to be addressed through legislation rather than executive order. I will now sort of get into the parameters of what we anticipate through executive actions over the next 10 days. And then in closing, I want to do a quick review of the most recent coronavirus relief package that is already passed into law, signed by President Donald J. Trump on December 27th to discuss resources that we already know are available to the city of Rancho Cordova and your other partners in small businesses in the community. So just, this is our, our preview of what lies ahead from, uh, the incoming White House Chief of Staff Ron Klain. He just, uh, about a week ago, sent out a dozen action items, uh, outlining the president-elect's day one agenda. Uh, the Biden-Harris administration defines four crises happening concurrently that they hope to address. First and foremost is the public health crisis caused by coronavirus. Second is the economic fallout caused by coronavirus. Third is the issue of racial equity and fourth is the climate crisis. Tomorrow, we do expect that, uh, that the president-elect, upon his swearing in after the noon hour Eastern Time, will formally extend the eviction moratorium, uh, as well as restrictions on foreclosures, trying to provide up to 25 million Americans with greater stability in the months ahead. The current eviction moratorium, uh, is set to expire at the end of January. And so this is going to be an important first item. He will also ask the US Department of Education to extend the existing pause on student loan repay, repayments and interest for million of Americans with federal student loans. Moving on to other items, uh, related to COVID, he will be issuing a mask mandate on federal property and interstate travel such as rail or aviation as part of his efforts to bend the curve downwards on coronavirus. Uh, he will be launching a 100-day masking challenge, which is not a mandate to the general public, encouraging them to wear masks. Unrelated to coronavirus, we expect that the Biden-Harris administration will rejoin the Paris Agreement, uh, tomorrow to fight, uh, climate ban that was enacted by President Trump the first week of his administration. And so.
Jen, I'm sorry, you broke up a little bit there. What was the Paris Court? Can you say it again?
The United States of America will be rejoining the Paris Agreement as of, uh, tomorrow afternoon. And the last action item for, for day one is going to be reversing the Muslim ban that was implemented by President Trump in the first week of his administration. So that is just day one that I'm highlighting for you there. Subsequent to that, we do expect the administration to take major action on immigration policy within their control. And so expect some, uh, administrative actions on both the DACA program, the Temporary Protected Status Program, um, and some other items related to federal immigration policy over the next 10 days. There will be additional executive actions forthcoming on the economic recovery and Buy America provisions as it relates to infrastructure, as well as, uh, some items trying to address matters of equity in America. The transgender ban in the military might be amongst those in the days ahead. Uh, with that, just to focus, uh, shift gears a little bit, uh, the Biden-Harris administration will be inheriting the, the administration and oversight of a 5,000-page piece of legislation that was passed, signed into law in December. And so we expect the federal agencies to really hit the ground running on issuance of implementation guidance and distribution of federal funds that were made available by the fourth relief package that was passed back in December. Really quickly, I do want to just provide you all with a really high-level overview, uh, of those programs that I think will be the most helpful to your constituents and other community partners. First of all, of course, we know that there are, uh, the additional round of economic impact payments going out through the Treasury Department. With public health, we have $25 billion for testing and tracing, $8.75 billion for vaccine distribution. And for the first time, uh, throughout the past year, $4.5 billion for mental health services and suicide prevention efforts will be made available. On the public health dollars, most of those resources will be funneled down through your state government as a grantee of the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Program through the US Department of Health and Human Services. So I encourage you all to coordinate with your partners in state government around the distribution of those funds. I know that your governor has his own plan for vaccine distribution. We do expect the Biden-Harris administration to put out, uh, additional public health directives in the days ahead. So this might, uh, change your state plans to some extent. There's been a lot of conversation here in Washington DC about the tension between ensuring swift delivery of vaccines versus ensuring equity. And so expect some solutions, uh, to be presented by the incoming administration. Moving on, of course, the eviction moratorium had already been extended through January 31st. And the US Department of Treasury is going to be administering $25 billion worth of rental assistance that's forthcoming to states and localities above 200,000. So the state of California will be entitled to receive $2.61 billion of that relief. Uh, of that, 45% of it will be sub-allocated to units of local government above 200,000, both cities and, and counties. And so you do have, uh, partners there in your region. Both the city of Sacramento and Sacramento County will both be entitled to receive their own separate sub-allocation. Now, given that, we would expect that Sacramento County would try to be helpful to other communities within the county. And so based on a preliminary, uh, back-of-the-encvelope estimate, uh, based on census data, uh, I estimate that Sacramento County will likely receive around $46 million in total. However, Treasury has not finalized these local sub-allocations yet. Uh, the, the certification process happened over recent days. And so they need to see if every unit of, of local government that was eligible actually applied for the funding. So those funds will be coming to your partners at the county. I would encourage you, uh, to have some discussions there. In addition, those funds can also be used to, to provide some support to renters for utilities as well, uh, in addition to their rental arrears. Uh, renters might apply for 12 months of, of assistance at once and may be eligible for an additional three months on the back end, depending on how, uh, the, the crisis unfolds. On utilities, there's a separate $638 million program for states and tribes to assist low-income households to pay water utility bills specifically. And I'm going to quickly run through some of these bullet points because I want to be mindful of time. On nutrition assistance, $13 billion worth of assistance is forthcoming. That includes a 15% increase for federal SNAP benefits. On small business assistance, which I know is so important to all in your community, there's $325 billion worth of relief, uh, forthcoming to the Small Business Administration. That includes $284 billion for the Paycheck Protection, uh, program, including first and second draw loans. So for the first time, businesses that previously received a, a loan can go back a second time. There's also $20 billion for the emergency.
I'm sorry, Jen, really quick. So are businesses that took a loan cannot go back or we're waiting for that to come through?
They can go back as of this week. That is all being reopened. And so we've sent updates to the executive team regarding some of the milestones. Uh, they did a rollout where they first made funding available to community development financial institutions. Uh, now that it is being reopened to the general public, everyone should be able to apply as of the 19th. And so I definitely encourage you all, um, to lift this message for your small businesses. There's a separate pot, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. There's $20 billion worth of relief available through that separate program at Small Businesses Administration. And finally, for the first time, $15 billion is available for venues such as theaters. Museums and zoos can all apply for a separate pot of funding that's newly available. So, uh, the, the venues program is not open yet, but Treasury just released some guidance uh, in preparation for the opening of that program. It's the first time they're implementing those provisions. So we expect more from them in the days ahead. Another thing worth noting, uh, SBA for the first time has a tool available to small businesses to help match them with lenders and identify the most, uh, appropriate resource for them moving forward. So I would recommend that, uh, you encourage your small businesses to apply to as many financial institutions as possible if they have relationships. We know that during the first, uh, round of, of the PPP program that there were issues. Folks were not able to necessarily apply through the Bank of Americas of the world, the Wells Fargos, they were running into issues. If they have relationships with community-based, uh, institutions, they might have more luck there. But we are expecting a full run on banks again, unfortunately. So hopefully we've learned some lessons from the first implementation of, uh, the CARES Act back in March of last year. Really quickly, just to round things out, transportation, $45 billion. Uh, that includes $10 billion for highways, $14 billion for transit, $2 billion for airports. On education, there was an $82 billion investment made, including $54.3 billion for your partners in K through 12 schools. And finally broadband access, which I think is critically important given these times. There's a new $3.2 billion emergency broadband benefit program that is being administered by the Federal Communications Commission. That is for eligible households who will be able to receive a discount of only up to $50 off the cost of their internet service, in addition to a subsidy for low-cost devices such as computers and tablets. Again, that's a new program, um, and so we expect more information on that to be forthcoming in the days ahead. Uh, with that, uh, that, that, you know, there are a number of other unemployment provisions that are included again. Uh, most of those will be, uh, there through March 14th. Um, of course, we remain at work. Uh, there, there's been, you know, extensions of, of the family's first paid second family leave uh, for payroll tax credits that have yet to be available for units of local government. We are working on that. We are also working, uh, to extend provisions related to, to subsidize half the cost of unemployment insurance benefits for employees of state and local government. Uh, as of right now, that has been extended through March 14th, 2021. It'll likely need to be further extended. And finally, the employee retention tax credit established by the CARES Act has been, uh, extended through June 30th. Uh, that rate has also been increased from 50% to 70% of qualified, uh, wages. And so I know this is a lot of information. Uh, throughout the past year, I have been so thankful for your leadership at the local level. Uh, I know that it has been incredibly frustrated, the lack of direct and flexible relief to cities under the size of 500,000. We are mounting a major effort in conjunction with our partners at the US Conference of Mayors, the National League of Cities and the National Association of Counties. Uh, as you could see, President-elect Biden's American Rescue Plan would propose $350 billion worth of assistance. I spoke with the White House the night it was introduced, uh, with Julie Chavez Rodriguez. The formula has yet to be determined. They will be working on that in conjunction with the congressional leadership. And so we will be hard at work ensuring that, uh, that funding is accessible to all communities, including Rancho Cordova, because I understand that that will enable you to, to pick, to choose your own destiny. And I think that's critically important for, for any community at this critical moment in time. With that, I am more than happy to take any questions you have about the many pieces of legislation that have been done to date and what might lie, lie ahead of us here in Washington in the months ahead.
Thank you, Jen. That was a whole lot of information.
Couple of quick questions. Um, just, so, uh, besides the PPP, you say there's other grant information for, I'm just going to go small business, just that's usually my thing. So, um, there's the PPP, there's loans that are out. And then do you see anything else down the road that maybe they'll be filtering to us besides the loans and that? Maybe something else about business owners? What, what are you feeling?
So their, their best bet as of right now are Paycheck Protection Program. That, that's the be-all, end-all in a lot of eyes. There's also the Economic Injury Disaster Loan through SBA. Um, I do think, you know, the $15 billion that's becoming available through your, your venues, your theaters, your art museums, your zoos, you know, that, that's a new program as well that I think, uh, you might want to think that through from a community perspective, since this is the first time some of those venues might be applying for funds. Um, other than that, you know, as we're starting our discussions with the incoming administration, I do think there will be the recognition that in terms of long-term recovery, cities will play a greater role in terms of ensuring that, that we bring Main Street back. Cause I know that the delay associated with a lot of this relief, uh, it was far too long for some of your small businesses to withstand. I know that folks are concerned about vacant properties moving forward. Just like the Great Recession, we're going to need to, to squeeze through again and encourage small business ownership, encourage entrepreneurs. And so I think that there will be another discussion happening, uh, in conjunction with, uh, President-elect Biden's second phase of his two-part, uh, rescue and then long-term recovery. And so by February, we should have a better idea of what the administration's going to propose for some of those long-term goals and objectives on the ground there. So if you have any ideas, they are soliciting input now in real time. Would love to carry any of your priorities back to them or to facilitate a conversation if you think it might be helpful.
Garrett, I have a question. Oh, did we lose here? Um, Jen, so, um, and then Jason, this may be a follow-up for you. Who's administering the, the $15 billion for museums and whatnot?
That's coming through Small Business Administration.
So the SBA is going to do it. But that hasn't been opened for applications yet.
Correct. They put the guidance out. So you could, you should start, um, if you can disseminate the guidance to anyone who's interested. I encourage it now, uh, cause that should be, should be opening in, in the, the immediate days ahead.
Okay. And Jason, this is a follow-up to you. I believe last week, I, I want to say it was GoBiz, but there was some sort of grant program. I know, um, uh, I, I serve on the, the Triberto Museum Board here and I want to say there was some sort of grant program at the state level that opened last Monday, I want to say. Does that sound familiar at all?
It doesn't sound familiar off the top of my head, but I will reach out to, to the finance and I'll give you an answer right away.
Okay, yeah. I, I'm trying to remember what it was. I know, um, a board member for the museum is also on a nonprofit school board or something like that, and they were applying for it too. Um, but there were some private dollars at the governor level or, or one of the departments last week. But if, if you can give more information to Maria, then get back to us. That'd be really helpful.
I absolutely will.
No, I, I don't know. I crashed out there for a second, but I just wanted to make sure. Is the zoo money, is that able to be used for our children's museum? That, that.
Yeah, yeah, it will be, Garrett.
So here's the, here's the full list of eligible entities. It's live venue operators or promoters, theatrical producers, live performing arts organization operators, museum operators, zoos and aquariums that meet specific criteria, motion picture theater operators, talent representatives in each business entity that is owned by an eligible entity that also meets the eligibility requirement. So that's a long-winded way of saying pretty broad eligibility. The other thing is if you have any publicly owned venues, they will be eligible, assuming they fulfill some other, uh, eligibility criteria. The first 14 days of these awards are going to be distributed to those entities that have demonstrated revenue losses of at least 90%. The next round of funding after that will go to those that have demonstrated 70% or greater. And then they will go to those that have demonstrated 25% revenue losses. So they're trying to target this based on need. The largest maximum grant size is $10 million.
Um, so Garrett, just off the top of my head, a lot of our arts organizations saw significant losses. Um, along with the Triberto Museum and a couple of other folks that, that might fit into those.
Yeah, our nonprofit, the orchestra group, they, they've lost a bunch. Like, there's a lot of people that are out that we could.
Yep.
Um, Cyrus, is this going to be, can we put this on your wheelhouse to like get our groups to go help them to start making sure they're applying?
Yes, this, uh, information is actually on our COVID page, um, COVID relief page on, on the city website. Maria, that's, that's correct, right? This.
Yes, and I did send it to some of our organizations, but this is a far more comprehensive list, so I'll make sure that's more widely distributed. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Terry, I did confirm while the discussion was going, there was twenty-five million dollars for cultural museums and art galleries and the like as part of the governor's early action items being proposed. To your earlier question, that could be as part of February budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you guys for coming, really appreciate your hard work, and I can't believe you guys are there. Stay safe during all these crazy times, and we appreciate you here in Rancho with the partnership.
Thank you all so much, appreciate you too.
Thank you, thank you very much as well, and congratulations to new councilmember Pulapati as well, so congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. All right, so I guess we'll move on to public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so by teleconference and Zoom. If you want to make the public comment, please use the raise your hand at the bottom of the center of your page. If you're participating by phone and you want to make a comment, please press the nine and raise your hand that way. For those participating by Zoom and telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. Speakers are encouraged to keep theirs to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provision of the California State Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item that is not on the agenda unless it is demonstrated to be of emergency nature or needs to take immediate action have rose after post the agenda. All right, I guess we'll go. Do we have any public comment? Stacy?
Hi there, Stacy Lightner, City Clerk, and we have no one in the audience, of course, because we are close to the public here at City Hall. We have a couple of hands that are raised here via Zoom, and I just want to make mention that if you're wanting to comment, again, to follow up with what the mayor said, that any comments that would be shared right now under public comment would be for items that are not on the agenda, and if you're wanting to speak to items on the agenda, you will wait until the item is called. So we'll start with the first individual that has an email address, and they're hand-raised. It looks like MJ Rouch, and I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you and allow you to speak. You'll have three minutes.
My comment is regarding the affordable housing proposal in Anatolia, so if you would like me to wait, I would be happy to do that.
Yes, we would like you to wait, please.
Excellent.
So I'll go, I'll go ahead and just mute you, and then I'll lower your hand, and you can join us again later for that item. So I don't have any other comments for items not on the agenda. Mayor Gatewood.
Excellent. So we'll go on to council reports. Siri Pulapati.
Yeah, on my end, I think it's been a pretty interesting two weeks. Again, personally, I still have to start my two-by-tws to give an official report on any, any of the matters sustaining to the city. I would say it was a really good MLK weekend. In fact, one quote that I'd like to say is from MLK is, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." And I think today is a really good show of people that are really standing up for anything that they believe in, and that's a really good representation of how our city should be. So with that, I pass my time on to the next council member.
Thank you. David?
Yeah, I've got a few things to talk about. First of all, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to congratulate you on your talk last Friday to the Rancho Cordova luncheon. You did a great job of upholding that tradition that stretches back now, well, that luncheon stretches back, Linda, before both of our times here, I'm pretty sure, back to the fifties, I think.
Nineteen fifty-nine.
Yes, so the luncheon's really long in the tooth, but the fact is, we've had mayor's talk like that in January at that luncheon, which was traditionally the community council luncheon, for almost twenty years. So congratulations, good job there, Garrett. Let's see, next thing, I've had a League of California Cities meeting, excuse me, Cal Cities, that's the new brand, Cal Cities Meeting, of the Revenue and Taxation Committee, which is quite an interesting discussion. We actually didn't have any legislation in front of us, the way we usually do. In reviewing California state legislation, it's a little early in the calendar for that, but we were talking about possibilities. And so being able to talk about the needs of infill development and old commercial corridors and financing for infrastructure for jurisdictions was a really, really healthy and good discussion. I've been having an ongoing series of meetings with community leaders. I've mentioned this a couple times last year during my tenure as mayor. I just want to let the council know those are continuing. It's with Cyrus, Diane Rogers at the Chamber, Shelley Blanchard at the Community Council, and in addition, we have the Superintendent of Schools and the Executive Director of CRPD on those calls, as well as Mark from Travel and Tourism. So we sort of have all the leaders of those organizations. We talked about, it was originally set up by me to be a COVID collaboration, how do we deal with the emergencies in front of us? And it's evolved into, and every other week or once a month, discussion of collaborations, challenges, and usually me giving some sort of virus-related update about what those folks should be worried about next. So I just wanted to let you know, those are still ongoing. It's not a formal appointment or even a regular meeting, we sort of schedule them as they, as they come, but it's a very good discussion. And let's see, I spent about a day in the National League of Cities Executive Committee Retreat last week by Zoom. You know, these retreat meetings are really challenging by Zoom, because you can't have any of those side discussions that you would normally have at a break. It's one thing at a meeting to be lacking that, but in a retreat, when you're supposed to be setting priorities for the organization, it's really tough. And I don't know how many of my colleagues here have experienced that. I'm excited about what the National League of Cities can offer this year and the opportunities ahead of us, particularly with regard to transportation and the renewal of a major piece of legislation we do about every five years that funds transportation from the federal level. That is a priority for the league, and there will be other priorities you'll be hearing about soon. And that is my report.
Thank you, David. Linda?
Garrett, thank you. So Siri and I joined our city manager, Cyrus, in a meeting with a transportation group that is interested in putting a, another transportation measure, funding measure on the ballot in a couple of years. And we talked about public transportation priorities for Rancho Cordova, the things that our citizens are asking for, the things that we know that people need, and what we all might do about funding them. We also described a variety of issues that we think are going to be major challenges for that group going forward for the next two years, and they seem to be very optimistic. So I suspect that CECOG and STA will be hearing, and Regional Transit will be hearing from them sooner rather than later, and probably have heard from them already. Regional Transit will have its first meeting of two thousand twenty-one next week, and I will let you know what we all do at that meeting. Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Terry, you're up.
Thanks, I'm looking at another computer here, so sorry that I'm gonna turn away, but I've got my calendar in front of me. So David and I, actually, no, David, I don't think you were there, but I think we met afterwards. We're finalizing our plan for our National League of Cities Post-Secondary Basic Needs Program. This is really what are we doing around our promise program? And how are we, not only what are we doing, but how are we measuring it? And are we being effective with the funding that we, that we are spending? This is part of, David, is it twelve cities right now that are in the program with the NLC?
I'm not even sure it's that many. It might be, it might be eight.
Eight, okay. I thought.
It's not, it's not a giant number.
Yeah. And so we're collaborating with cities all across the country and really coming up with, what are we doing to assess the basic needs of our post-secondary education students in the city? And I think in this region, we can say we're doing more than any other community, in my argument, maybe even in this entire state. And as we learn from other ones, it may turn out that we're doing more than a lot of people across the nation are doing, especially during COVID. We had, I believe, we had the Full Cordova two-by-two last Monday, and we got an update as far as what they're working on, you know, they're one of the only school districts in the county that actually has students on campus, you know, part-time. So we're thrilled to at least see that still moving, moving along. We do have, I believe, later on this month, Elt Grove and Sac City Unified at some point, we're meeting with those two usually every other month at this point. Full Cordova is more regular about monthly. So more to come. And then, yeah, like Linda, the Air District hasn't met, so they'll meet on the twenty-eighth for their first meeting of the year, and we'll give you an update after that.
All right. Thank you, Donald. All right, so once again, I had my great discussion. Thank you, Shelley and Diane, for inviting me to do that. It's great to talk about the city, it was very long. The only problem I had is at City Hall, if you stay still, just be inside the picture, the lights turn on. So throughout my whole speech, the lights kept turning on and off. And then the most interesting question I got from the people was, what happened to your hair? So I had to explain to them that my hair doesn't fit in this box, so I had to cut it to fit in the box. Met with the STA, we went over, we have a new person that's helping chair of the STA. We elected the two people. We said goodbye to, of course, Steve and his group, who, who someone new came in. I had the vice mayor, mayor meeting with Donald where we went over some stuff. I met with Regional Sands for the first time and learned that there's some money out there for the city to help us, we're gonna do with water treatment. I met with Walt from the Cordova Food Locker, probably some very interesting developments coming our way on that. And then I met with the STA, and then I already met them, and that was it. It was a lot of Zoom, and I hate it. I hate it with passion, deep, deep-seated passion. So I cannot wait for everyone to get immunized and this thing to take its course. And at that point, we'll go ahead and call on our city manager, his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be, in the interest of time, I'll be very brief. Most of the meetings have been mentioned. The only thing I would like to add is that I, along with a group of my colleagues, had a meeting and discussion with Dr. Olivia Casiri, our County Health Officer, and she provided some information about the availability of vaccines to the general public as well as the city staff. So some information will be forthcoming in the coming weeks, and as this information becomes available, I'll be sure to provide that information to the city council and to the community. That's all I have.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, consent calendar, items that consist of matters deemed routine and nonparticular issue by staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved with one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to pull?
Aye, none, I'll move approval of the consent calendar, items nine point one through nine point four.
Second?
All right, that's your first and your second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. So then we will move on to consent. Consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and nonparticular of our staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item, individual consideration, all items approved with one motion. I'd like to open the public hearing and ask the purpose there is any speakers.
There are no speakers. There's no speakers.
We're on item eleven, you're saying?
Ten.
And.
Ten point.
Thank you.
I'll move it through.
It's a resolution to approve a situational on the AEB. I'm closing it. All right. All right, do you have any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, let's get into regular calendar items. Can we go ahead and start with number one?
Eleven point one, the subject title for that is a resolution to approve an administrative use permit, conditional use permit, and a letter of public convenience and necessity for Royal C Store, project number DD one zero 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 seven. And I'm gonna go ahead and.
Can I ask staff?
Move over the staff.
All right, staff report, please.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna recuse myself on this item.
All right, thank you, David.
Just text me when you're finished with it.
Can, can I ask a question, David, before you do that, as to why you're recusing yourself? Is this?
Can someone text, David?
I think the city manager can answer, or the lawyer, Adam, can answer that.
Adam, go for it.
We should be expressing why we're recusing ourselves.
There was some correspondence that Councilmember Sander engaged in that suggested the possibility of a common law conflict on this matter.
Okay, thank you.
All right, staff, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Nick Sosa, Associate Planner with the Planning Department. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so today's presentation is regarding the Royal C Store, project DD one zero 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 seven. You can go to the next slide, please. The subject project location is zoned in the commercial mixed-use zone. Due to the zoning, the applicant is requesting three entitlements from the planning department as part of their application. The first entitlement is an administrative use permit, which is required for a convenience store within the commercial mixed-use zone. The next entitlement is a conditional use permit for the off-site alcohol sales, and the third entitlement is a letter of public convenience and necessity, as required by the Department of Alcoholics Beverage Control, for a census tract that is overly concentrated as to their guidelines. Next slide, please. This is a map showing the project location for the, for the proposed store. It's located within the Rockingham Shopping Center, on the corner of Rockingham Drive and Matherfield Road. Next slide, please. The existing business at this location is currently a smoke shop, currently run by the applicant. It's open and operating. A smoke shop is allowed by. It's open and operating. A smoke shop is allowed by right within a commercial mixed-use zone. The applicant would be expanding their inventory to be more of a convenience store with off-site alcohol sales. Next slide, please. So the A U P, as I mentioned before, is required for the convenience store aspect, and that is with or without the alcohol sales. The Rancho Cordova Municipal Code requires additional standards for convenience stores. These standards include outdoor lighting requirements. It requires management to be responsible to remove any litter resulting from their business. It requires a security plan to provide safety measures for both employees and customers. And the applicant would be working with the RCPD to develop that security plan. The additional standards also include window coverage, limited to no more than 15% to maintain visibility for safety reasons. And also, security systems be in place and employee training to help resist crime attempts. Items such as drop, time drop safe, additional video cameras, employee training in identifying and detecting potential illegal activity, visible requirements for cashier and customer visibility, and also hype tape and other aspects like that. The applicant will also be operating from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM in order to help minimize any late-night illegal activity. Next slide, please. A C U P would be required for the off-site sales of alcohol in the C M U zone. Also, in this, applicable in this case would be a letter of P C N, which is required if a census tract is over-concentrated or in a high-crime area. According to Department of Alcoholics Beverage Control, A B C, census tract 90.07, which is the census tract that this project is located in, is allowed only one off-site alcohol license. This application would be the second off-site alcohol license within that census tract, which was making it considered over-concentrated by their standards. So staff has worked with Rancho Cordova Police Department in reviewing its existing licenses, both within the census tract as well as within a half-mile radius of the project site. Next slide, please. So RCPD has put together this map showing all alcohol license locations within a half-mile. We've also outlined the boundaries of the 90.07 census tract, which is used by A B C to determine over-concentration, over-concentration. As you can see over the alcohol license, most of the alcohol licenses are across the freeway along Folsom Boulevard. There are four dots within the census tract. The two red dots are off-site licenses. The yellow dot is a restaurant, and the orange dot is the applicant's proposed location. The two off-sale alcohol licenses, which are those two red dots, are the 76 Gas Station, which is the one located at the bottom right. That one is currently active, and it's a type 21 off-sale general, which would be similar to what the applicant is requesting, which includes beer, wine, and spirits. Sunny's Market is the other red dot to the north at 3291 Matherfield Road. They are currently listed as suspended on their, on the Department of A B C website. So therefore, it's not active. That was a type 21 off-sale as well. Next slide, please. This, this map shows all the calls for service within a half-mile radius of the project site over the past year, from January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2020. Throughout that timeframe, there was a total of 3,648 calls for service taken, which is a decrease of 215 calls from 2019. These calls for service are, include both public and police officer calls. Four calls for service were directly from the subject property. This is a decrease from six calls in 2019. Of the, all those calls, of the 3,648, 328 of those calls became official police reports, which is an increase of seven from 2019. No police reports were taken from the subject property in 2020. One report was taken in 2019 for theft. Next slide, please. So to put those numbers in a little bit more perspective, we looked at the past five years of calls for service as well as reports. In 2016, there was about 3,500 reports. In 2017, there was about 4,200. And then from 2017 to 2020, it was decreasing down to 3,648 just last year. For reports taken, it was 321 in 2016, 349 in 2017, 337 in 2018, 321 in 2019, and 328 just last year. Just last year's reports taken of 328 was below the overall average of across the five years. Next slide, please. So given the two, the information about the over-concentration and the calls for service, staff is recommending that the city council determine the project exempt under section 15301 for existing facilities for SEQA and to approve the C U P, or A U P, C U P, and P C N subject to the conditions of approval and findings contained in the resolution. Next slide, please. Staff will be available for questions as well as RCPD. Speakers from the RCPD as well, and also the applicant is available to answer any questions specifically regarding the business.
Um, Nicholas, I...
Thank you very much. Can we go ahead, let's hear from the applicant?
I have a question, Garrett.
Siri, can we hold the question? Let's, let's have the applicant talk, and then we'll hit them both with questions. Then we're gonna, if you can, if you write down, then we'll, then we'll let everyone kind of speak to it, and then we'll give our opinions. So go ahead and have the applicant. We can pull him up. He's somewhere out there. Stacy, can you promote him, please, or for her?
He has been, um, let's see.
I see him on the...
He's on mute.
Yeah.
Hello, everybody.
Excellent.
Hello. We can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
I don't know what to say over here. Basically, I wrote down a few points, if you would allow me.
Go ahead.
Okay. So as in management-wise, we are taking our business very seriously, and we've always done that. We check IDs over here, everyone unless it's obvious. And, you know, we've been sent decoys all the time over here. And we have some letters right here that proves that we have always, you know, did our part in not selling it to any underage kids or anything like that. And also, we don't let anybody solicit outside the storefront. We make sure we provide safe environment for our employees and customers and make sure they have been served politely regardless of age and race. And even this Thanksgiving, you know, we always try to give out for the community. So even this Thanksgiving last one, we were giving out free food to the homeless people, to the needy, to the less fortunate. And we gave out about 200-plus plates that we served over here. So we always try to look out for the community. We're not just any other store. We try to do our part and, you know, give back to the community as much as we can. And as well as, when it comes to security measures, we operate very safely over here. We do have 24-hour surveillances and make sure that we train our employees to be, you know, safe. And also, we're in talk with the security company that, you know, pending on the approval of this project, like if we do get approved, then we're trying to hire security for, you know, late nights or evening events. So make sure that no wrongdoing is done, all kind of stuff like that, and prevent crime from happening in order to keep our customers and our employees safe over here. And also, if we get an approval today, not only will be providing safe place for our customer to have a pleasant shopping experience, but also we'll be creating more jobs by hiring more hands from this community itself. And more business for us obviously means that, you know, more income generated for the city as well. And we'll take all kind of measures to ensure that we don't promote any crimes over here, but instead help the community peacefully. And also, we have already provided the city that we are accepting all the conditions and restrictions that the city sees fitting in order to get the city's approval. And then on top of it, you know, Nicole already said that the hours of operation, we have already suggested that we're not going to be open late. We are only suggesting 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. In that way, you know, we're not here tonight, and so we can prevent crimes from happening. Thank you. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer.
All right. This is... Let's go ahead. Any council members have questions for the staff or...
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound. Enter your participant ID followed by pound. You have joined the meeting as an attendee and will be muted throughout the meeting.
Doing that doesn't do a very good job of, excuse me, projecting out how large or small those dots are. Those typically are going to be, in a lot of those cases, those are going to be apartment complexes or multifamily areas where you've got a denser population of people, which would be why those numbers look so large.
Can I ask a follow-up to that?
Go ahead, Donald.
So you're saying that like in the middle there, that red dot that says 266, that's not 266 calls? In, in a given site? Because I, like, like right around there, it says 266, it says 81, 131, 75. Those wouldn't be calls for service per parcel or something?
Knowing that area and knowing what we're looking at, that would not be, be called at one specific location. That would be for more of a, almost like a grid, like a grid area that the system is putting this together. Normally, when we make up a map out of our regular mapping program, it would do more of a density hotspotting type.
Okay.
See where the actual hotspot is. This is more of an attempt to identify that there's calls all over the place versus a single, super-hot location.
Okay.
All right.
Jeff, that's a really, really important question, though. Because anyway you look at it, over 3,600 calls in a year is a totally appalling statistic. And I know that somebody will remember that when we demolished the Grand D Apartments on Folsom Boulevard, part of the reason was the fact that they had had almost one call a day for as many years as they'd been around, since they converted from an office building to an apartment complex. And, and so it was a really important statistic in terms of figuring out how to curtail that illegal activity. So when I look at a statistic that says, this is not 360 calls a year, this is 3,600 calls a year, then it's like, oh, my word, how could you possibly recommend adding alcohol sales to this location?
So if you look at the boundaries of that half-mile radius...
Can someone bring that, that, that thing back up, the graphic? Please.
What graphic?
The graphic that shows the...
Talking about the calls for serving.
Calls for service.
Yeah.
Page nine of 10 on the staff report.
Yeah, I'm looking at it on my computer.
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute.
There.
There it is. Okay. Go ahead.
You are unmuted.
So within this half-mile radius of the applicant location, there are some of the largest multifamily complexes within the city that are located just along Data Drive, South White Rock, Laurelhurst. So the nature of the density of the population is going to drive up those calls for service. To those places, I don't believe that any of those are any that we would, that we specifically have large, ongoing issues with. Certainly, there's problem properties within the area, as there are all over the city. It's because of the density of the population that's within this one half-mile radius of this location that those numbers jump up that high. Now, which is, again, why we have shown the five-year numbers, because we're looking at the immediate neighborhood around this location versus any specific neighborhood group or neighborhood. This location orders three different neighborhoods within the city. It's located within the Lethal Business area, South White Rock is immediately east, and Countryside is immediately north and west. So looking at it in this type of, of a situation where you're sort of looking at an overview of everything, you can certainly see that as you go into where the more dense housing are, those dots become redder because you have more calls for service at different locations there. And those are, like I said, that it's simply showing a density of the dots, not necessarily at any particular residence or apartment complexes. Just as, as you get more people together, those, the dots get a lot darker. And it's their attempt in the software to show you a hotspot without an actual heat map.
So, but Jeff, so it, but it, is it accurate to say that there really were over 3,600 calls for service last year and that there were 328 reports taken in this area?
That is correct, within that half-mile radius.
Okay.
Okay. Let's go ahead and hear from, uh, Stacy. Let's go ahead here for the public.
Okay. So we have a number of comments via email that have been submitted. And I see one caller who has their hand raised. So we'll go ahead and we'll start with callers who are phoning in and Zoom. So I'm going to start with the individual whose telephone number is 804-42. And if you'll give me just a moment. The caller who has their telephone number 804-42, you have three minutes to speak to this item.
Hi. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. So this is Fiza Muggles from Lincoln Village. I was going to read my comment, but instead, I'd just like to point out, especially to Councilmember Budge, that if your number is 3,600 for calls, please consider that that is a traditionally under-reporting community. So the actual incidences that would have normally needed or required service are not actually, I mean, it would be a higher number than... number than what is being reported. Um, and I do know this because about a decade ago, I lived in the apartments immediately across the street. I've seen the conditions there, I know the population there. Um, but my babies were quite tiny, but I load them up in a red wagon and cross the street over to the Mather Sports Complex, and you have to walk in front. First of all, you're looking at Sunny's on your way there, now there's the smoke shop on your way there, and then you're there. And back then, it was a great, um, escape from the environment. In the baseball field or the, uh, property of the, um, Mather Sports Complex property immediately behind the shopping center, there were, back then at least, um, vernal pools seasonally. So we were, I mean, it was a treasure to have that environment, and, um, that complex was more family-friendly, which I really appreciated. Um, and I'd like to see that be the trend. Um, we do know that even if it's an extremely responsible store owner, which is what I'm hearing, and that's great, we do have, um, in the community what I call dusty dudes, and there could be, there could be exchanges that you won't see, they won't be on camera, they won't be in front of the facility, but it will be the community right across the street, where you have the relative, the neighbor, or some other adult that's willing to buy and supply. Um, and those products ultimately are unhealthy, regardless of how responsible an owner is. I don't see that as being a benefit to the population and the community there, especially the ones that are sort of a, um, captive audience right across the street. So please consider those things. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Bye, Stacy.
The next speaker that we have is Tim Rose, and Tim, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you as well. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, can everybody hear me?
Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you. I just wanted to voice my support, uh, for this, uh, particular measure and this store owner. I have actually frequented his business. He is a consummate professional. Uh, his store is clean, his customers are friendly, he is, uh, compassionate towards the community, he does take security very, uh, personally. And, uh, while I understand the concerns of the previous, uh, individual, I do believe that this would overall be of value to, to this community in terms of both the services that he provides and the tax revenue that he would contribute. That's it.
Thank you so much. Go ahead, Stacy, the next one.
The next speaker is, they put their hand down. Oh, uh, we have another one, S.K. S.K., you'll have three minutes.
Hi, just a quickie. I just want to say, it's, it's no offense to the business owner, but I mean, you're already looking at stats that are kind of mind-blowing in a way. Um, you're hearing from people who actually live there. You're seeing that the alcohol board is saying that that's already going to be over what they would even recommend. Um, and as much as I appreciate what this business owner's doing, I mean, this is right next to the sports complex. This is, you know, this is an area that people should be able to bring their families, and, and, you know, what are we, what are we telling our kids? That, you know, oh, look over there, you can get tons of alcohol and other things in this area. And, you know, it, it's, it's not family-friendly anymore. And, I mean, I, I think there might be better ways to serve the community over there than to add more alcohol and more smoke shops and more other things. Um, maybe they should do a different side business, you know? There's nothing wrong with that either. I just, I just don't want to see Rancho go down. I want to see it be positive for, for, for the community members and for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the dog, because that's hilarious. You cracked up Linda.
The next...
All right, do we have someone else?
The next speaker is Inida. Inida, you'll have three minutes.
Yes, hi. Same thing. I feel like, um, no disrespect to the o- owner, and they might be as responsible as they can be. It's always in, uh, those type of areas where there's alcohol involved, that there's people lingering around who can bring things to the children or our teenagers. But if they're passing by, if they're going to the park, if they're going to any type of sporting, uh, uh, event, they can be lured in. And there's always the l- luring in people who are sitting around, and they might purchase something and even try to sell it to the youth. So, uh, I know there's, uh, great business revenue and, and, but, uh, there could be another way of bringing that area a little bit more up to quality. Um, I don't know how to even say it a- anymore, but we got to protect our youth.
Thank you so much. Go ahead, Stacy.
In addition to those who have called in or, uh, joined us via Zoom, we had a number of individuals take the time to submit public comment via email. I'm going to go ahead and read the names of those who have submitted their public comment via email, and I'd also like you, um, to know that we have posted them on our website as well. So for anyone who would like to read each of these, um, items, you can read them directly from our, uh, council page website, uh, where the agenda is posted. Uh, the first, um, and I, right now I'm going to read off, there's a total of about twenty, and they are all opposing item eleven point one. Uh, the first individual is Mark Berry. Following Mark is Joyce Higdon, Deborah Cahal- Cahill, Rita Vasquez, Susan Taylor, Karen Colborne, Michael Del Grace, Helen Wayland Bashaw, Antonia Mares, Faja Mugal, Elijah Lewis, Angel Ball, Wayne Kaiser, Mary Nestle, Donald Childs, Mary Ann Laramie, Michelle Barano, Janine Anderson, Aiza Abdur Rahim, Belinda Rianda. If anyone would like, uh, to take the time to read those public comments, they are listed on the City of Rancho Cordova's website at www.cityofranchocordova.org, and look for the city council meeting agenda.
Now, our speakers, Stacy? Stacy?
I have more.
Now, our speakers?
I have more. Um, I have...
Oh, okay.
Uh, I have thirty-three, uh, in favor of, and, uh, these are also submitted in writing, uh, via email, and I'm going to read those off as well. Uh, in favor of, Mitchell Claw, Kai Jorgensen, Gary Singh, Erin Sampson, Cynthia Harmer, Tom Hannan, Stephen Harmer, Leilani Gonzalez, Scott Moore, Noel Lucas, Steve Banks, Amber Nobrega, Alexandria Carlson, Brian Carlson, Mariah Zirdan, Ramandip Singh, Shane Reed, Camille Motley, Donovan Williams, Bruce Durr, Stephen Merle, Amir Tinas- Tas- Tasen- Tasanari, Caleb Smith, Frank Duran, Emily Brown, Miguel Polatron, John Gaucher, Laura Young, Dean Moore, Arturo Vega, Jackie Steiner, Peyton Hamilton, and Nick Gonzalez. These are also posted on the city's website in favor of item eleven point one, and you can read them at www.cityofranchocordova.org, and look for the city council meeting. Thank you.
All right. Um, let's start with what everyone thinks. Council members.
Okay, Garrett, so, um, um, there is no question that we need to compliment the store owner for his, um, um, for the way in which he runs his shop. Um, having not been in there, but, um, obviously, we have, uh, a couple dozen people who, um, really believe in what he's doing and the way in which he runs his business, and that's very much appreciated, especially in this location. Personally, um, I have absolutely no problem with his becoming more of a convenience store, because we also had people who were opposed who were supportive of there being, uh, a small grocery store in this location, and, um, convenience stores can provide that, um, um, can provide that service. We're all familiar with the importance of CBS and, uh, at, at Stone Creek and, um, Walgreens, um, um, in the Sun Ridge area, um, and the way in which they have been our grocery stores from the time they opened to, uh, to when grocery stores were available around that area. It's really important service. But personally, I cannot support the, uh, use permit for the alcohol or the, um, uh, the granting of a, a PCN letter. Um, we have too much history with this area. It would be, it would almost, from my perspective, it would almost be a dilution of our duty to help this gentleman maintain his store in a safe and healthy and attractive manner if we allow him to do that. Um, and that's, that's just my perspective. The statistics are very much against the request.
Thank you, Linda. Siri, what do you think?
So one of the things that I was trying to take into account is the calls for service. Um, if you look at twenty eighteen, that was when the Sunny's Market, uh, which had alcohol, again, it may not play a picture, but, but when you see twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, um, the calls for service went down nearly three hun- like, three hundred less. Um, so they were going down and down, and if we were to take into account that this is because of Sunny's Market, um, that's a huge part of the safety. I, um, again, I absolutely compliment the owner. You have so many people vouching for you as an standing citizen. Uh, you're giving back to the community, and that's, that's all we are all here for. Uh, and kudos to you for that. Um, and I agree with Linda that a convenience store is something that's really needed in this area. In fact, having a convenience store with so many residential, uh, uh, apartments right opposite, you know, you'd have a lot of kids walking to your store to just pick up, uh, groceries or whatever they're not, bubble gum. And, um, having alcohol in on-premise with, along with the convenience store actually kind of negates that purpose for me to, if, if I were living there, I'd easily send my kid across to go pick up something, but then I'd be more apprehensive if there's alcohol on the premise, then that doesn't solve, my purpose doesn't help me on that. So, um, I would very much like, uh, to approve the AUP. Um, it's, uh, having alcohol on license, uh, onsite is not something I'm comfortable with.
Thank you, Siri. Donald, what do you think?
Yeah, so, let me kind of, uh, take myself back here. So, the first neighborhood I lived in in Rancho Cordova was Countryside Neighborhood. So I was three blocks from this site. Um, so Sunny's was the convenience store. Um, and to the, the commenters that talked about the, um, the extra commerce transactions that were taking place in the parking lot in the streets around there, um, or however, let's just put it that way. Um, and so, knowing that neighborhood, knowing, um, what I see along there, because, you know, just looking at that call for service thing, I, it clearly along Mather Boulevard right there, we have hundreds if not over a thousand calls for service right there. Um, and as much as we can say that the densities of apartments and other things like that, it's also the activities that are happening on that street. Um, and so, as far as I know, Sunny's lost their liquor license, right? I, I believe, I believe we all know that. Uh, and I think, Siri, you just alluded to it. Probably one of the biggest drivers towards the, 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 the lower calls for service is the lack of alcohol purch- or sales at Sunny's, um, which has been a problem for years. Um, and again, as somebody who lives there and saw this firsthand, um, you know, and I, and my children really weren't even big enough to go to the park back then, um, so this was me maybe stopping on my way home or, or, or something as I, as I was coming back from work. Um, you know, it's, it, there's no need for more of this. Um, there are other places to get to that are very, very convenient to that neighborhood without putting it within walking distance, again. Um, and to be honest with, and, and again, it, it sounds like you're running a, a fine business. I, I will say I've been no friend to smoking or cigarettes or tobacco during my time on city council. Um, and so, yeah, if you'd like to change the name of your business and sell other things that besides alcohol and cigarettes, I would by all means encourage you to do that and support you in any way that you'd like to do that. Um, but we've taken great strides towards trying to become a tobacco and smoke-free community. Um, and furthermore, you know, it, it was a huge win for the neighborhood for Sunny's to lose their liquor license, period. Um, you know, within the Lincoln Village neighborhood, I mean, we have streets on Lincoln Village Road that, you know, there's two or three liquor stores next to each other. Like, this, this is not something that, that is lacking, and it's lacking on that corner, but it's not lacking within that community. Um, and so I couldn't, in, in good conscience, support that application, especially considering we've had a fairly strong history. I mean, the, the idea that, that, I mean, part of your proposal says that, that you'd be operating until eleven o'clock. But we've limited to eight PM even in some of our newer neighborhoods that don't have a, been over concentration. Um, and to think that we would even entertain that, it's just, it's, it's not something that we could do. Um, and so even if liquor, maybe your liquor sales would, would hit stop earlier, I don't know, but I heard eleven PM, and, and, you know, we've, I mean, we haven't allowed liquor licenses on Mather Boulevard just on the other side where, where the Chevron asked for it, uh, just, what, four or five months ago, six months ago? Um, where they were going to do a complete redevelopment of their, um, site and put a car wash and a lot of other things in, and, and we still said we couldn't support it. And they ha- they have a, a beer and wine license, or no, actually, I think back, they didn't have it. They were trying to get a beer license, only a beer license, and we said no. Um, so, out of just being consistent, I think that's, that's one thing to look at. Um, but on, on that corner, knowing that corner and knowing that stretch of, of this community, you know, the only I can say is, the people that I know that live over in that neighborhood applauded when, when Sunny's lost their liquor license, and I can't imagine supporting another one across the street. I just can't.
All right, thank you, Donald. Um, I'm just going to echo Donald's, uh, being a small business owner, I understand wanting to expand and seeing an opening to be able to sell alcohol, you know, and, and the fact that you had thirty people that are actually willing to, uh, support you, I think is an amazing thing. However, um, plenty of alcohol in an area where we already have thirty-six hundred calls for, uh, please, and then there's, and then the lady that brought in, there's probably another fourteen hundred or plus or more that could possibly be called. It's just, it's not a, uh, something that I'm going to, um, actually entertain at this time. So at that, um, I'm going to close the public hearing. And then, since we're not actually doing the motion that was said, how do we word this, Donald?
Well, Garrett, um, it is my, uh, uh, information that, um, if we plan to deny this or only approve a part of it, then we need to continue the item for two a part of it, then we need to continue the item for two weeks and allow staff to draft a resolution that would reflect our action. So, I personally am very comfortable recommending approval of the AUP to allow him to convert to convenience, yeah, convenience and recommend denial of the use permit for alcohol sales and the PCN letter of public convenience and necessity.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion?
Yeah, can we just have the city attorney weigh in that that would be the easiest way to do this?
Sure. What, what we'd like is for the council, as council member Budge started, the, the motion that we would be seeking would be to give direction to staff to come back with new findings based upon the conversation that we've heard here tonight. And, and for those to be presented to you. And I'd like it if you could give us either the next meeting or the following meeting because we want to be sure we accurately and fully reflect your, your comments. Mayor, if I could, just for the record, say that a number of the comments that you made and council members made related to a couple of the different findings that need to be made in the resolution, and those were 3B and 4A in particular. And so, we will be focusing on drafting your comments that you made into those. And to answer the question, yes, you, you could, you could approve the permit authorizing the, the switch to the, to the convenience store and, and deny the permits regarding alcohol.
So, do we take a vote right now, or do we just wait for you to come back in two weeks?
You, you give us direction to prepare those findings and resolutions, but you do not take final action here tonight.
Okay.
So, we need to vote to continue it for two weeks?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Gatewood, this is Darcy Goulart with the Planning Department. Could we potentially have a continuance for a month just so that there's enough time for us to prepare those findings and then come back? Because the staff report will be due any day now for the next meeting.
Okay.
So, we'll go ahead and?
The first meeting in February.
All right.
The second, second meeting, council member, second meeting.
Yeah, this is already in January, sorry.
Thank you.
And, and Darcy, any other clarifications?
No, I think with the council members' comments and the findings that you just referred to, we probably have more than enough information to draft those two different resolutions and come back in a month.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Could someone text David, please?
We need to roll call.
Oh, we still gotta do the roll call for the push? Okay.
Yep.
Uh, roll call.
Thank you. Uh, council member Budge.
Yes.
Council member Pulapati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood.
Hi.
Thank you. And was there a second? I had a, I had a motion from Budge.
I second.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we'll wait for David.
All right, I'm back.
I guess we'll move on to regular calendar items. And I'm gonna ask the clerk to go ahead and announce the subject.
The subject for the first item is a resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of the City of Rancho Cordova Grant Line 208, Community Facilities District Number 2018-1, approving and directing the execution of a supplemental fiscal agent agreement, approving the form of preliminary official statement, approving sale of such bonds, and approving other related documents and action. And our staff person for this is Michelle. And if you can just give me a moment to move Michelle Mengay over, that would be great. Michelle, are you with us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Can you see me?
No.
No. Let me turn on my video.
There you go.
Okay, there we go. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Michelle Mengay, Senior Finance Analyst. The item before you this evening is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a second series of bonds for the Grant Line 208 CFD 2018-1 project. This CFD was formed in 2018 for the purpose of financing infrastructure and certain impact fees within the Grant Line 208 Development Project. The financing resolution before you this evening approves the sale of the bonds in an amount not to exceed $7 million. This deal is similar to previous CFD, and the proceeds are anticipated to be used for the payment of infrastructure-related impact fees. The special tax bonds issued by the CFD are secured solely by the special taxes levied and collected within the boundaries of the CFD and are not debt of the city's general funds. So, with that, I will open it up to any questions that the council may have for either myself or the members of the city's finance team, which are also on the Zoom call.
Move approval.
Second.
Ask for roll call.
Council member Pulapati.
Yes.
Council member Budge.
Yes.
Council member Sander.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood.
Hi. All right, I'm gonna do a five-minute bathroom break before we get into this one. I know it's gonna be long. Huh?
Good night. Good night.
You're welcome.
So, I'm gonna do a five-minute bathroom break before we get into this one. So, let's go ahead and quick bathroom break.
Thank you, Garrett.
All right. Stacy, are you there?
Yes.
Okay. Can you please announce the subject?
I don't see all of our council members yet. I don't see Siri. There she is.
She's there, she just hit her thing.
Okay, and Donald is there. Okay, perfect. All right, the subject for this item 12.2 is a discussion regarding proposed affordable housing project at the corner of Anatolia Drive and Chrysanthem Boulevard. And give me just a moment to bring over our speakers for this item. So, Stefan, I brought you over, and Micah, and is Chris joining?
Unfortunately, Chris with Danko Properties has another scheduling conflict this evening, so he will most likely not be joining us this evening.
Okay, I did not see him.
Another council meeting somewhere else.
Thank you.
Oh, good evening, council, Mayor, Micah Runner, Deputy City Manager. Just want to provide a little context before Stefan dives into the proposed project as well. So, as you've directed, the city is interested in seeing the development of housing for all individuals and housing types into the city, including affordable and workforce housing. When we talk about affordable and workforce housing, what it means in this context is that there's some sort of income or rent restricted for the property or for the units themselves. Those rent restrictions can come at a variety of levels as far as the income level. So, there's different types of projects that can move forward depending on the, and projects are different depending on the income levels for that particular project. Any project like this that would require local match, any project that is income restricted almost always requires local funding to make happen, to make work. And so, a project like this definitely would require that local match. That's mostly why we're kind of early on, very early on in this process, presenting this to, to the city council for, for information. So, before moving kind of this project forward in any way, in further discussions, further negotiations with the, with this group or any other group regarding this property, we felt it was important to hear from both the council and from the, and from the community itself about the, about the proposed project in this, in this spot. As part of that, we did reach out to the Anatolia HOA Board, and we also posted information about this meeting on Nextdoor as well. So, really, this is just to open the dialogue for the conversation, wanted to hear where you as the city council think about this project, what you're thinking about, and what the community thinks about this project. And with that, I think I will hand it over to Stefan to describe the project a little more and go into a little bit more of the detail. So, thank you.
Thanks, Micah. I think I'll just wait for the clerks to bring out the slides here. Okay, and I've got control. All right, good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Stefan Heisler. I'm the Housing Manager for the City of Rancho Cordova. I'll be presenting tonight's discussion of the, the proposed Anatolia Affordable Housing Project. So, as you may know, the city has ownership of a site in this area, and because we have received interest from multiple developers, as Micah has mentioned, on this site and the adjacent parcels, we're having this conversation with you this evening. As Micah mentioned, the goal for tonight is really to share with council the proposed projects, or the current project under proposal, as well as receive the direction of council and then provide an early opportunity for residents to learn about the proposal and provide feedback. So, the sites under consideration are at the southwest corner of Chrysanthem Boulevard and Anatolia Drive. You can see here, the, the site highlighted in yellow is the 2.8 acre city-owned parcel, and then the two parcels in red are the privately-owned parcels. Altogether, it's about 10.7-ish acres. We are located exactly right across the street from the Eagles Nest Park and the Anatolia Clubhouse. So, the project concept really, under consideration right now is an affordable rental housing for a mix of seniors and families, about one-third of the units for seniors and about two-thirds of the units for families. As Micah mentioned, the incomes are targeted at workforce housing, really 50% to 60% AMI, as well as the flexibility with the funding sources projected that would be used with this proposal do go up to 80% AMI, but really, the average is probably looking more at, more at 60%. So, for a household of four, to give you some context, it's really about $52,000 of income a year, or $36,500 for a household of one person. So, we're really looking at, you know, teachers in the area, substitute teachers, bus drivers, janitors, clerks, office workers, call center operators, chefs at any of the local restaurants, or clerks. Under this proposal, it is about 130 units, plus or minus, and we're, we're still very flexible at this point and happy to take direction from council to work with the developer on potentially a different number of units or a different mix. But this is, it's qualified under the medium-density zoning, which requires less than 20 units per acre. This proposal is about 17 units per acre. It does include single-story cottages for seniors and proposing two-story apartments for families. And of course, any development at this site would need to go through the city's standard design review process to make sure that the architecture is in concert with the neighboring communities and up to all the standards that are required in the Sunridge specific plan where this is located. So, on this side, there's a picture of the concept and development site plan. I don't want to go too far into the weeds on this because it is so early in the process and at a later date, if we were directed to move forward, I would come back for actually the full entitlements of, of the site. But you can see here, on the left side or the south end of the parcel, would be the single-story cottages for seniors, and then on the right or north side of the parcel would be the larger two-story buildings for families. Parking under this proposal meets the city's requirements and is actually about 44 spaces for the senior component, which is double what would be required for the seniors, but it does meet the minimum requirement for the family's side. Some of the reasons why an affordable housing project is, is being considered at this site, the site is located in a moderate resource area and is actually adjacent to the city's only high-resource area under the State of California's 2021 Opportunity Mapping, which makes it a good candidate for state funding that, that requires these, these criteria. The, the opportunity mapping uses, uses criteria such as poverty and incomes, as well as educational attainment, and test scores at nearby schools, as well as environmental factors. Micah, are you, are you wanting to say something? Okay. Secondly, the site is included in the city's housing element and is identified in the regional housing needs allocation as a site for low-income housing. And subsequently, in the affordable housing plan, or the, sorry, excuse me, the, the city's housing element, this project would eat several of the adopted policies, such as H. 3.1, which is to create balanced neighborhoods without an over-concentration of affordable housing, as well as 2 in 3 there that would provide a range of senior housing opportunities and housing for special needs populations such as large families. And then lastly, at the June 2020 housing workshop that we had last year, council did mention the site in Anatolia as a potentially a priority site to look at for the city's next affordable housing project. So, one of the main reasons also for having this conversation is the, the funding strategy that would go in with this, with a potential project here. If staff is directed to move forward, there would definitely be a financial gap that would need to be covered from, you know, any variety of sources, but we're probably looking at a gap between $2 to $5 million. There's no funding-specific proposal here tonight because we would, we would work with the developer if, if directed to move forward and come back with a more final funding request, probably later in 2021. Here's a, here listed are a few sources that could be used to fill that. Several of these, or most of these are actually funding sources that are dedicated for affordable housing, such as the state home consortium funding, as well as the bottom two bullet points, such as the city's housing trust funds, as well as any state permanent local housing assistance funds. Also, probably expected would be some contribution of the city-owned parcel, either donation or a sale and leaseback or some kind of arrangement. And then lastly, any development impact fees, or loans, or waivers, or reductions. And the, I mean, with the, the final funding package, we would, we'd figure out exactly what, what would go best there. So, thank you for the time to present this, and happy to take comments and questions, and also looking for council feedback on direction for this project.
So, I have just one clarifying question. The, the, the potential applicant developer isn't here?
No, not tonight. Unfortunately, we didn't give them a whole lot of notice. We wanted to make sure that we got this project in front of council as early as possible and in front of the, the community as early as possible so that we could just have an initial conversation. I think at this point, you know, developer has expressed, you know, entire flexibility as to what specifically would go into such project here. They're, they're looking at getting the, the adjacent parcels that I highlighted in red, kind of under contract for, for their purchase. So, they're interested in working with the city. But at this point, I mean, I think at this early stage in the game, it wasn't entirely necessary to have them here tonight, but I'm happy to relay any, any comments or questions to them as well.
Yeah.
I, I would just.
Stefan, I'd like to.
No, no, Garrett, I, I was gonna say, so, I totally disagree with you. The fact that we're having this meeting and that we informed the public about this- The fact that we're having this meeting and that we informed the public about this and we, and we're not going to be able to get answers from the developer, we should not have held this hearing tonight. If the developer wasn't able to be here, we don't know what the asks are, like, I don't know. We, we got a lot, there's a lot of people that got really worked up and sent a lot of info to us and we don't have the applicant here to answer questions.
Yeah, Donald, if I can just mention real quick, I think, you know, part of the, part of the, the discussion really isn't focused on the particular developer. We've actually had quite a few other developers interested in this property as well. And so really what we didn't want to get into the analysis of this particular developer themselves, but really talking about the concept of, of an, of an affordable or workforce housing project on this property. I think the, the next phase of this conversation, if, if there is interest in this type of development for this property, would get into more of the details of evaluating the developer themselves and who they are and what that project looks like. Really, this was meant to be more of a conceptual project as far as into the, the type of project that we might see here, so that we didn't get too far down the road with some of these developers and negotiating some of the, some of the details and some of the activities for this particular project. It's really to look at the overall concept of this, of this project for this location before it moves forward to the next step.
Yeah, to, to me, the, the entire conversation is laid at what is the financing and the ask from the city for a project like this. And, and comparing that to priorities of other projects and other things that we're trying to do around the city and if this would take from that. So to me, this is a big mistake. We should not have done this without developer here. This is not a conceptual conversation. This is a project that you have rendered, that you have a map for and we need to understand what the ask is, not do we, are we going to entertain the idea or not? The point is, is whether or not it's something that, in my opinion, rises to a, a level of something that, that we want to engage in. And we can't do that without knowing what the developer's asking for.
Donald, I can, I can understand your point, okay, but I can, I can personally deal with this conceptually. And as you might imagine, I mean, obviously I have comments on this potential site plan.
Yeah, and so, and I'm, and I know the public does as well. I just think that.
So, right.
Not having the developer here was a big mistake, so.
And of course, we know, we know that the success of any project like this is in having high design, not, not any corners, you know, making sure that it is compatible and that kind of thing. But I do specifically have a question about the, the whole, um, um, concept of this, this is of resource areas, Stefan. I didn't, this is not a term that, or maybe we have, but it doesn't ring any bells. And I would be interested in knowing a little more about the definition of a moderate resource level that's adjacent to the city's only high resource area. What, how do we define a high resource area? Where is it? And, and what is it about the high resource area that makes this a moderate resource area? You get my point?
Yes, sure.
Is the opportunity being a part of some federal program or a state program or what?
Sure, so I can, I can give you some context on that. So it is a new policy direction that the State of California is looking to implement. So in the past, with affordable housing projects, the state's kind of criteria have been more focused on access to transit, you know, helping neighborhoods that are already disadvantaged. But then really kind of looking at that, looking at the trends and the data over a number of years, finding that projects in those locations are really not moving people kind of up as well as they should or could or as, as much as the state desires. So there was really a, a new push to look at, you know, areas where there are areas of opportunity. So opportunity for folks to actually move up socio-economically, whether with higher incomes or educational levels. So I think it was, it was only a year or two ago where the state produced the first opportunity mapping or opportunity index that, that kind of tried to answer that question of where are the locations in the state where people are actually moving up or have the ability to move up? And now that that's sort of, I guess, you know, in its second or third iteration, they're starting to apply those criteria to the state funding sources for affordable housing. So you're no longer going to get bonus points as much for being in disadvantaged neighborhoods. You're, they're looking more to provide bonus points and, and competitive applications for areas of opportunity where people can actually move up.
Okay, it's like, what is the, what's the potential influence of the surrounding area?
Right, so some of the criteria they're looking at are poverty, incomes, educational levels, education attainment, as well as, you know, the test scores at nearby schools relative to, you know, other state standards and also the environmental factors.
Got it, thank you.
All right, David, go ahead. Do you have anything? Or we ask for the?
Sorry, I was having a technical difficulty here. I could not unmute myself. Well, these are always really challenging projects and it's a little difficult, I agree, to just kind of talk about this at the conceptual level, but I guess, you know, the, that sort of very high level of looking at this site, there are, you know, things we'd, we'd want to state upfront. First of all, I heard Linda's comment about, you know, you need to have a premium design for something like this to work. I completely agree with that. This needs to be something that improves the look of the neighborhood, literally, as opposed to anything that does not look like it belongs. So it has to be very kind of high-end on the, on the style side. It has to more than fit in ideally. Second, I, I'd be really concerned about the impacts for immediate neighbors. And the site has some advantages in that regard, being, being somewhat physically separate, but parking would be one of those questions. Is there adequate parking at the site? And as I think I heard staff describe in this particular example, and this is not a formal consideration of this proposal at all, this is a very high-level discussion again, but as in this example, there appears to be a surplus of parking with this particular design. So that would sort of be the standard I think I would be, I would be looking for. I've heard concerns from residents about the impacts of schools. And, uh, you know, this is a rapidly growing neighborhood in general. There are going to be ongoing impacts to schools and, and the Elk Grove School District is, is struggling, I think, in some regards, trying to keep up. Certainly we'd like to see, for example, a middle school open there sooner than, than it is being provided. And we've worked with them, we've worked with that district, trying to accelerate those sorts of things. Would this contribute to that? Yes, but so does all the other housing development going on in a growing area. That's a, a relatively, I guess, normal complication in, in new growth areas to have those sorts of school challenges and, and difficulties. I suppose the other thing people are worried about is that these sorts of developments bring crime. And, you know, I think the appropriate thing to do is let's look at some examples in other jurisdictions and as a community, talk about that. Because I think Donald here probably knows the good examples, having been an affordable housing developer, but I think there are a ton of examples of projects that actually benefit neighborhoods as opposed to bring the crime that so many people worry about when they hear something described as low, low income. You know, we in the city have done this before, we've done it along Folsom Boulevard. I think it met all the criteria and still does that I just laid out. We did it again with Mather and Veterans Village. That's sort of the extreme low end in terms of, that's a homeless population we dealt with, I think successfully, without having negative impact on that area. And I would hope that we could achieve something like that here as well, given that, you know, the state puts us under a lot of pressure to do these. And I should, yes, I should also mention, you know, there's a chance this year's legislation or next year's legislation where we don't have any say in, in what this looks like. The state legislature is sort of on that bent of, it's local government's fault for not approving more affordable housing, so we're going to take your decisions away and just let developers decide. That's sort of the trend we're on statewide. So there's a risk if we have no action of exposing ourselves to something totally and completely out of our control. So this is not a simple thing, you know, in any way, this is really complicated. I could probably go on here, I think Donald could probably go on here for an hour or Linda as well, but, you know, just sort of top-level considerations, that's what I would like to see going forward.
All right, um, before, Siri, do you want to say something? You want to weigh in or before I get people's testimony?
Yeah, no, let's get the public comments first.
Okay, all right, let's go ahead and do public comments. So just everyone that's getting ready to talk, there is no actual design approved, there is no one that's actually going to develop, we haven't even got there yet. This is only a high-level concept if there was to be affordable housing in this location. And I apologize, it was kind of pissed you like we were developing it today, but that's not actually happening. So this is just concepts of affordable housing possibly going into the city, this location or any other. So, go ahead, Stacy.
So first I'd like to address the 11 who sent in their public comment by email opposing this item 12.2. And I'm going to read each of their names. These comments are also posted on the city's website at www.cityofranchocordova.org on the city council meeting webpage. So first we have Nicole Coleman, Becca DeFrancesca, Alexis Frug, Yvette Horst, Renee Crawford, somebody who is anonymous, Robert and Bettina Davis. We also have Mark Roche, Omar Eekball and Lili Rahim, Tim and Kim Rose and the Pains. And then I'm going to go ahead and move to the phone calls and the Zoom, starting with our first person who has their hand raised, which is Mr. Roche.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Mark Rauch. I've been a resident in Anatolia since 2013, I'm sorry, for 13 years since 2007. I've lived and/or worked in Rancho Cordova since 1984. I'm sure you'll all agree that affordable is a relative term. Sacramento is a nice affordable alternative to living in Los Angeles and San Francisco. In the same respect, within the Sacramento area, Anatolia is an affordable alternative to living in the Fab 40s, Land Park, Granite Bay and Rancho Marietta. And so Anatolia itself is already affordable housing. The question is, does Anatolia need an affordable housing alternative? The answer is no. There is no, there are no significant nearby places of employment for workers who can't afford Anatolia's already rather affordable housing. There are no office complexes nearby, there are no education, large educational facilities, no medical facility, no major medical facilities and, and no major commercial district. We have a small retail strip and many, if not most, of the workers who work in those shops are high school or college graduates or college-aged people who live in their parents' homes in Anatolia or one of the other adjoining subdivisions. Shop owners and upper store management personnel can typically afford a home in the existing Anatolia area or they own homes elsewhere. Regarding affordable senior citizens' housing, the same basic situation exists. That is, the existing style of Anatolia housing is already an affordable alternative. Moreover, we have no convenient nearby major medical facilities to serve residents of a specifically built senior citizens' housing complex. We have a very small emergency clinic and no private medical offices. There are larger medical facilities in the Rancho area, as we all know, such as Kaiser and, and the Veterans Hospital, but there are much more practical areas where senior citizens' housing might be better situated. In particular, I think the land on the west side of Zinfandel Drive between Spado and Bear Hollow would make for a great location as it's perfect for convenient ambulance access, freeway proximity and a walkable distance to Kaiser, Blue Shield and Veterans Hospital. For housing to be more affordable than what is already available or in the building stages, Anatolia housing would have to be, this new housing, this new proposal would have to be low-cost and marginally built. The proposed land is directly on the main entrance to Anatolia. Putting low-income, low-cost housing at this location would detract and devalue all of the existing homes. A new planned, very affordable housing project should be built on other land in Rancho Cordova that would increase the value of the surrounding properties, not decrease the value. Some suggestions I have.
Your three minutes is up.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is S.K.
That's Siri.
You are muted.
Hello, um, just to piggyback on some of what Mark had said, you know, obviously we, we want people to have affordable homes and, you know, that, that area near our clubhouse is already very, very affordable. It's actually the most affordable pretty much in this area out here.
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute.
You know, the schools are already impacted. I have not heard a single thing tonight in maybe its early stages about how that's going to be addressed. We already have buses that are overloaded. Sometimes the buses don't even show up. We have kids that are getting offloaded to this school, to that school, because they already can't get into their schools. And I understand this is Elk Grove, however, it is your job to coordinate with Elk Grove School District to make sure that you don't overburden the system that's already overburdened. There's a lot of parents who are concerned that they already moved out here for a school that they can't get their kid into now. And yes, there's going to be more schools out here, but now you're adding high density, you're adding more than we had planned and it still hasn't been fixed. I agree with Mark that there's other areas that would be better served for the people. Seniors would be closer to Kaiser in that area. And, and honestly, you know, as, as far as families, I grew up where, they called them projects where I grew up, and any of them that were along highways like that, you know, the 65 mile an hour sunrise that's right next to this, there were dead pets, there were kids trying to cross the street because the kids have nowhere to go. There's no offices, there's no, you know, other than the, the elementary school way down the way, there's nothing else there for them to do. They're going to try to cross the street to go to Walgreens and all these things. I just couldn't think of a, a less safe area for families than right there considering their pets and so forth. And then I heard, I heard in the thing that you're minimal parking for the apartments. Where are they going to park? We already have problems in our neighborhood now with parking all over the place and, and we have had, as an HOA, we have had to spend our own money to get private security in our neighborhood because we still can't get a police presence out here. I'm not saying apartments are bad people or anything like that, but let's be realistic. You guys just mentioned the, the alarming rate of police phone calls that you got in high-density apartments in Rancho. You're, now you're proposing to put more high-density apartments in an area. We can't even get police out here now. Now you can see why people are concerned. And I, we, we're not going to keep paying for a police presence out here when it's not getting fixed. I don't understand why we're not putting the apartments by light rail where people can actually get to work, because there is no work out here. Maybe 20 years from now, maybe, but right now we have a railies and we have a handful of stores. There's nothing for them to go to out here other than adding more traffic and, and having to find a way to get to the light rail station to get to work. Fortunately, my daughter just turned off the light on me. And as far as the design, this is going to cost a lot of money. If you, if you're going to make it look nice in our area versus bringing down our property value, that's going to cost a lot of money. Whereas I think about other areas of Rancho that are closer to work, closer to light, light rail, closer to more schools that won't be impacted, you could probably uplift that community with some nice apartments versus trying to match what is here, which is already the threshold of nice and affordable. I, I'm not saying that apartments are bad, I'm just saying where this is particularly at doesn't sound like it's going to be good for those families, for their pets, for their kids. And I just think it's going to cost the city more money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next speaker is Tim Rose.
Good evening, everybody. I hope you can hear me. Uh, thank you for allowing me just a minute of your time. I do not believe I will be as eloquent as Mr. Rauch, but I did want to point out a few things in the presentation and in the initial council members' responses. First, we keep being told that this is just a high-level view of this proposed project, but based on some of the council members' discussion and their personal opinions, it appears that they have stated in their viewpoint that this is more than a high-level view, and that they do intend on moving forward in some fashion. So I believe that it is disingenuous to continue to indicate that this is just the initial stages, hey, we're just trying to get some basic concepts down, things of that nature. Uh, next, I note that Mr. Sanders indicated that, as with all housing developments in certain areas, there are challenges with the school system and with the, uh, level of, uh, kids that go to each one of these different schools. Uh, as he's pointed out, there are already issues with the two local schools that are in this area. We have Crestley Ranch that's being developed, we have subsections of Anatolia that are being developed, we have Sun Ridge that's being developed further. So I guess my question is, why would we want to, uh, expound or elaborate, for lack of a better term, on an already existing problem? When those homes are sold and the people are moving into those homes that are already being built and already have been built, there's going to be a greater, uh, presence of children, and thus it's already going to impact the schools. So why are we potentially addressing the problem, or expounding on the problem, if you will, by adding even more high-density, uh, housing to the area? Um, I would note that Stefan indicated that one of the things that is being taken into consideration is that revitalization product, projects in certain communities have been deemed ineffective over time, and so therefore, they are looking to take, uh, I believe he indicated with disadvantaged persons into better areas of opportunity. Does that mean that the city is somehow now going to be canceling the revitalization projects elsewhere? I would say the answer to that is no. Um, in my opposition, which I did send an email today and has been posted on the website, um, I do note that the Rio de Oro, uh, specific plans that have been, uh, presented to the city already address high-density, uh, housing, they address it towards, uh, the White Rock, uh, road area. It appears that the city already has taken into consideration potential high-density, uh, and village core, as the, uh, plan indicates, um, opportunities. So what I'm not understanding is, why is this affordable housing project not being considered in that area? It would be closer to the major portions of the city, it would be closer to public transportation, it would be potentially closer to light rail. There's a lot of advantages that would be better suited for this type of program in that particular development as opposed to this small speck of land down in Anatolia.
Tim, your time is up.
I guess, fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
The next speaker is Nicole Coleman. Nicole, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead, Nicole.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, my name is Nicole Coleman, and my husband and I have been homeowners in Anatolia for twelve years. We are active members of our community, and we intentionally and very carefully chose Anatolia when we were in the market to purchase a home. We feel incredibly fortunate to be raising our family in such a vibrant and thriving community. To date, we feel that the city council and staff have done a superb job in strategically planning and balancing community development plans with housing, commercial properties, dedicated open space, and parks. Which brings me to the genesis of my remarks to you this evening. Anatolia is not the right place for medium-density, low-income apartments, and there's a number of reasons why. I detailed those reasons in a letter I sent to you all yesterday on January eighteenth, which I assume, um, based on what the clerk said, has been posted online, but I do also want to just, um, outline them here during public comment as well. Access to public transportation, as others have mentioned, is a really critically important infrastructure element that has to be considered when planning for low-income development, and public transportation in and around the Anatolia community is scarce. Residents of these apartments would not have the necessary access to public transportation to get where they needed to, get where they needed to go. Um, our schools are already overburdened, as some other of my, um, neighbors have mentioned. As an apparent of an elementary school student, I speak from experience when I say that our two elementary schools are already at or exceeding capacity. While I understand your council is not responsible for planning and developing school sites, you do have a responsibility to plan developments, uh, acknowledging these types of current constraints. Medium-density apartment homes will bring more students to our already overburdened schools, negatively impacting the academic climate for all of our students. As other neighbors have mentioned, um, increased parking issues is another concern of ours. If you live or visit in our community, you know that parking is already an issue. Many single-family homes have more cars than will sit in garages and driveways, and streets are often lined with vehicles. Medium-density developments will bring even more cars, and in addition to that, this development is proposed to be right across from our clubhouse, and I would imagine that that might be used as a sort of overflow parking for the folks who live in that development. As residents who pay dues for clubhouse, uh, use, not being able to park there is just not acceptable. So for these reasons, our community is not the right fit for a low-income apartment, uh, project like this. A strictly senior-living development would be more appropriate, um, because seniors don't often require ongoing access to public transportation, won't have young families' members who would be overburdening our schools, and generally don't have an abundance of cars in each household. In reviewing the staff report on this item, I recognize the city, the city is trying to find sites that would satisfy the increased regional housing needs allocation for low-income housing, and it's also my understanding that the city staff has other sites that would be a better fit for this type of project. So all of that said, my request to the council, um, tonight is to vote not to consider a low-income development in the Anatolia community. Instead, please send, uh, send staff back to the drawing boards and can have them consider other sites within the city boundaries that would better align with the above criteria that I mentioned, while still satisfying the RHNA allocation needs. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Todd Wheeler. And Todd, I am just unmuted you, so you should be able to speak, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Todd Wheeler, Anatolia resident and, uh, HOA president. Uh, as you can imagine, uh, I received several, several phone calls and emails, uh, as soon as this was, uh, presented. I share most of the sentiments that, uh, my fellow neighbors have already said, so I'm not gonna go ahead and, uh, repeat most of that. I'm figuring I'll kind of go off-script here and add a couple things that haven't been presented yet. Um, one of them being, uh, I think it was, uh, Stefan that mentioned that the, uh, government has come out and they've decided to, hey, change things up, let's put affordable housing where affluent people are, and let's see how it does. I don't think anybody in Anatolia bought here wanting to be a guinea pig. Um, we've now heard that they've done it for less than a year. I certainly don't want to be a guinea pig, and I don't think that anybody else wants to. Um, we've all seen how government decisions have worked out in the past, and most of us aren't happy with the way they worked out in the past, so I think that's a great reason, if no other reason, uh, to kind of reconsider this. Uh, number two is, it'd be really nice if the city could sit down with Anatolia residents and come up with a plan on what to do with that parcel versus having to develop with some who obviously isn't in, even invested enough to show up. Um, I know what you're saying, Mike, I, I understand what you're saying, Stefan, but the reality is, is he didn't show up. That kind of just shows the type of person that's already coming to the plate. Um, versus bringing in Anatolia residents and saying, hey, as a city, we'd like to know what you guys want. I found a study, and I can email to anybody to, that showed that, and it was a recent study based on ten years of research, that found that new affordable housing projects in lower-income neighborhoods increased surrounding home prices and reduced crime, while new affordable housing projects put in wealthier neighborhoods drove down home prices and increased crime. These are stats. Um, again, I, I don't want to be the guinea pig to find out if this was, uh, right or wrong, or what the deal is, but I know we talked about, you know, let's, uh, make it cohesive with the surrounding areas. I'm not sure how you're gonna put two-story apartments and make it cohesive with the surrounding areas. Um, to me, it's just not feasible, and again, I think that's where a nice roundtable with the city, with the HOA can put together something, where the council can get together with residents and, you know, come up with a plan that works for everyone. It seems to me like you'd be a lot better off finding in a area, building that affordable housing, and then building housing around it, and where people know when they're buying a house that there is that there, versus throwing it down the throats of some, you know, people who have already invested, uh, a lot of their money, in this area, and didn't know that it was gonna be there. So I ask you to reconsider, I ask you to think of, uh, Anatolia as a whole, um, just the clubhouse logistics of it being right across the clubhouse, I can already see a whole bunch of kids trying to sneak through the doors, I can see, you know, costing the, uh, association more money with security, trying to keep that from happening. We allow guests now, I, I can imagine there's gonna be a lot more guests coming, which would overburden the, uh, pathway that we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a quick question for that speaker? The study that you referenced, I'd be really interested to see that. Could you send that to the council, or?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mon. Mon Farrar.
Yes, uh, good evening, uh, to the mayor and the council, happy new year to all of you. Uh, this is going to be short and sweet. Uh, first question is, uh, to Stefan, when did you guys did the feasibility, that study? Because it looks like, uh, all the comments that I hear from my fellow homeowners here, it looks like your studies, uh, outdated already. And the second question I have is, have you done any feasibility study with a similar project on a different community, or county, or state? Because, uh, really, uh, looks like there's an overwhelming no to this community, uh, like what our HOA president has just mentioned, you know, it looks like you're shoving a, a project to our throat without consulting the community itself. It's going to be, it, it should be a team effort, uh, between the, the, uh, the, uh, leadership and the community, so we have, uh, a successful project.
Thank you, Mon.
Thank you.
The next speaker is, uh, caller calling from two zero seven, two nine, and if you just give me just a moment. The caller calling from two zero seven, uh, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you so much, um, I appreciate getting this time to talk. Um, I have lived in this community in Anatolia for about ten years now, and when we bought in this community, we did ask to see the master plan for this planned community, and a part of that plan did not include this type of housing. I have selected to buy in this neighborhood because I love the community, I love the school, I loved all of the wonderful things, and I absolutely agree why, you know, everyone would desire this type of, of living. Um, what bothers me is that in addition to this coming up after we've already bought, um, we were told at purchase time that a middle school was coming, that a high school was coming, that shopping was coming. Shopping just got here in the last couple of years. Um, I bought when my children were in, just in kindergarten, now they're in middle school and high school, and, you know, transportation, using the bus system, has been just a constant headache. And yes, I know it was brought up here, that there's more development happening in this, in this area that would also impact the schools, but I, you know...
Enter your meeting ID followed by pound. You have joined the meeting as an attendee and will be muted throughout the meeting.
Wonderful neighborhood, a wonderful family-oriented neighborhood, but, you know, I fear for the crime that would come if we were to open this up for this type of living. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Craig Osborn.
Stacy, if you were talking, we didn't hear you.
Okay.
Stacy, we can't hear you. Are you letting Craig talk?
We have, yes, we have technical difficulties.
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press, you are unmuted.
Um, I don't know if you can hear me, but I can hear you saying that you can't hear Stacy.
Craig, we can hear you now. Our, our, our line, our line just timed out, um, but we're good, that only affects a couple of us. Uh, but Craig, your three minutes will start now, thank you for your patience.
Terrific, thank you so much, Stacy. Um, good evening, council members, um, this is Craig Osborn, um, I do live in the Anatolia neighborhood. Um, many of the points that I had planned to make so eloquently have been made, and I don't think there's a whole need to repeat them, but I'll summarize them. Uh, we understand that the city has an obligation to, uh, make certain, uh, progress towards affordable housing. We understand that, and I think most of us support that concept and support the city's efforts to meet that obligation. Uh, but this location is not the right fit. This would not be good for existing residents for many of the reasons that have been stated. It would not be good for the prospective residents of the proposed housing either, uh, for a lot of reasons that have been stated. Uh, it would not be good for quality of life of either group, and honestly, it would be a net negative for Rancho Cordova. It's admirable for the city to be actively seeking locations for fulfilling the obligations, um, and I want to say that I'm ready and willing to assist the city with site selection, uh, and things like that, but this is not the right site. Absolutely not the right site. Um, uh, I've been on the board directors of our HOA for fourteen years, I'm currently the vice president, and I'm, uh, real excited to be working with Todd as president, but you're hearing from, uh, at least two of our board members tonight, plus one former board member, Mark Rauch, um, and I, I hope it's clear that the sense of our neighborhood is that, uh, this is not the right project at this time, at this location. Thank you.
Next speaker is S.S. S.S., you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, thank you. Um, basically, everybody that has spoken has stated what I have thought of, and there's no sense in me reiterating what has already been said. I've been a resident of Anatolia since two thousand five, and I agree with everybody else that this affordable housing is not compatible to our community, and the site is not going to fit in to the architecture and structure of our way of living. I thank you for your time, and thank you.
Next speaker is Deving Vora.
Right, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, um, thank you, mayor, and all the council members. Um, I am a resident here for twelve years, and I enjoy my everyday life here in Anatolia. Uh, I'm a big supporter of affordable housing, but not at this location. Um, and pretty much all of the neighbors here, two thousand houses, I don't see any positive emails you have received, I don't see any person, uh, here supporting this idea, other than, uh, probably, uh, city staff and the developer who didn't care to show up here. So what we need here is, we don't want city to move we don't want city to move forward with this idea and forget about this site. This is about 800 acre site where you have this 2,000 beautiful houses. They all look very unique and we have this clubhouse, which is worth probably $5 million. And you are trying to build this apartment in front of that clubhouse, which will never match that architecture. We don't want our tax dollars money to spend to make this architecture to compare to our clubhouse. We spent a lot of money in our last 15 years to pay off this clubhouse, right? And then that's something we chose when we bought this property. And now city is enforcing us this, this affordable housing. That's, I don't think it's a, it's the right thing morally. I mean, you guys need to come down here, walk around here, spend some weeks or evenings here. We'll host a few dinner or snack at the HOA. We have a really good board. You need to sit with them and really you need to understand what can fit here. You need to rezone it of this area and, and build something which can benefit to city, to the community. This is only six acre, seven acre lot you are talking about. We have 800 acres here, right? So we cannot spoil 800 acre area for seven acres. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Gil. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can you hear me?
We can, we can. Go ahead, Gil.
Great, great. Well, I'm not going to come up with anything new because it's been stated over and over again that this site isn't the prime site for putting affordable housing. And has been mentioned, there's several challenges that we, that already exist in our community. That on paper, you might think, well, it's a higher income area, an area that has a higher level of residents who have attained a higher level of education. And so it may look on, good on paper according to the state's new parameters. But again, we do have challenges. We have parking problems in the neighborhood. We have to pay for our own private security to keep crime low at this point. And also the schools aren't impacted. So there's no guarantee that these students who, the state, in the state's mind, would have access to some higher performing schools will even get into those schools. I mean, they may be redirected to schools that may be lower performing than what the area shows. So I would really urge that the city council look for a site that is more appropriate for affordable housing. And if it is really Anatolia or bust, which I really have a hard time believing that there's no other sites that the city can find that would be more appropriate for affordable housing, think about senior housing then. If that would satisfy this affordable housing directive from the state. Because seniors would obviously place much less of a strain on resources that are already stretched thin in our community. And I also wanted to mention too, that there was a recent article in the Stanford Business Graduate School. It came out and it made a point that affordable housing can actually increase in areas that need revitalization. They can increase surrounding property values. They can bring in potential buyers of homes that would be looking elsewhere. And they can actually increase diversity of those areas. But it does point out that if you build affordable housing in higher income levels, there's actually a decrease in the property immediately surrounding the area. But not only that, it also tends to radiate over time to the surrounding area. And it is something that can even be seen as a damper on property values over a 10 year period. So I would really urge the city council to look elsewhere to put affordable housing that would meet the needs of residents in those units. Thank you.
The next speaker is Renee.
Hi. So I do agree with all of the statements that have been made with, from my neighbors. I've been here in this neighborhood since 2015, so for five years. And what I loved about the neighborhood when I chose to purchase here was that it was a rural area. And it seems that for some reason, everyone's hell bent on covering every single square of land that they can. Seems like the new developments have all been mass density, where you get a postage stamp sized piece of property. Can't even put a patio set out in your backyard. My, my house, I have just put a, invested a lot of money into it to improve it. And I pay a great deal of taxes every month. Significant amount, about $700 every month of my payment goes to taxes and fees. And we were supposed to be getting extra police patrols for that. We do not. We don't ever see a cop. I just finally saw one this last week when our windows were, our car windows were all bashed in. They bashed in about 13 or more car windows. So that cost me some more money. The last thing I want to see is even more mass density housing placed to reduce the property values that I've invested a lot of money into. And then also to increase the access to our neighborhood. I've been asking about gating our community and now you want to put, you just want to put all of that element into our neighborhood without providing us the extra police patrols that were supposed to be provided with those extra tax dollars. If you can't provide that, then you should refund the money that we paid out. It just seems like your hands are in the developers' pockets and don't give a damn about what us citizens, property taxpayers want. So that's, that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
The next speaker is Janine. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm not a resident of Anatolia, but I find it just very disheartening. All of the comments that have been made so far. Because the bottom line is, we're talking about people. We're talking about people who need places to live, period. And I, and I'm a homeowner in my neighborhood and I do, do understand all of the frustration and whatnot. But at the same time, these are people who are wanting to make a better life for themselves and their families. And to sit there and say on one hand that you're concerned about the welfare of these families, but they just, but, you know, for all of the reasons that have been mentioned, but they're the reasons that are currently going on within the neighborhood already, is ridiculous. People need a place to live, an affordable place to live. And it, it's not someone who makes less money than you. It's never someone's choice to be poor. Everyone has the same goal, the mindset, to do better for themselves and to do better for their families. And children deserve to have as much better education as they possibly can. And if your neighborhood is able to afford them that, why would you deter them from that? You could be deterring the next doctor, the next president, the next great lawyer, the person who cures cancer, all of those different types of things. I get it. We work hard. We, you know, to build it for our families and all of that stuff. But that's just, I mean, I would, after the, all the comments and things that were made here today, I would not ever want to move to Anatolia. You're in a bubble. You're in a bubble and it's not okay.
The next caller is David. David, are you there? You'll have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we hear you. Go ahead.
I'm a resident of Anatolia and I'm hearing a lot of comments of how this will stress our system, what it will do to our home values. That's, I agree with all those statements. I want to reiterate that this will also stress our EMS system that will be right next door with the senior development there. So you'll have to pour more money into that just to support that senior development. I'm also an ER nurse, so I see all the, the patients that come from skilled nursing facilities. So you're going to talk about an increased burden there to this area. And as, I want to reiterate what everybody else has said, I am not comfortable with this going on in our area. And I would hope that you would look towards an area where this will bring up the neighborhood and allow individuals that utilize this home development to easily get to work, to get to resources, to utilize mass transit, to get to jobs. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Vic. Vic, you'll have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead, Vic.
Okay. I've been a resident of Anatolia for 15 years. Been here since 2006. Yeah, raised two of my kids here from elementary school. We opened up Sunrise Elementary. My kids have went through middle school, high school, and both are in college now. Excuse me, I'm losing my, my breath because I've been working out. But anyway, yeah, we've, we've raised, we moved here from Antioch in 19, in 2006. And the reason we left Antioch, California, was because of a model similar to this. Where they introduced affordable housing to the areas that we lived in. And it turned out to be a disaster. We had, our, our kids then were both in elementary school. We had a drive by in our neighborhood, a drive by shooting. And my wife decided it was time to pick up and go at that point. So this kind of reminds me of that right now, even though my kids are grown, grown and in college. Just a thought and a model of having that image close to me. Again, and having to relive this, the Antioch situation all over again, is just very fearful for me. Because my wife and I now are living here, the kids are grown, but we still have to remain here, you know? Like you said, we pay, we paid our taxes, we paid our HOA. We don't feel comfortable with our cars parked even in our driveways anymore, you know? So we're just trying to do everything we can and, and, and let our voice be heard to let you guys know that we've lived through introducing affordable housing in a neighborhood before. It was, Antioch was a brand new development, just like this was when we moved here. And we stayed there seven years, seven or eight years. And once they brought the Affordable Housing Program in in Contra Costa County, it just, it wasn't a good thing. Our kids, I mean, it just overnight, the crime rates jumped sky high. Just went sky high overnight. So I'm just speaking on behalf of myself and my neighbors that I speak to frequently. And our HOA board, that if there's anything that can be done to free us of this, we would greatly appreciate it. Do you guys have anything to say? Okay, I was just seeing if my kids are home for winter break. I was seeing if they had anything to say. But I greatly appreciate this time. I'm a longtime resident of Anatolia. I love it here. I love my walks in the neighborhood. My wife and I and my kids go over to the basketball courts and use the clubhouse. Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Stacy?
The next speaker is LV two zero two one.
Hi, can you hear me?
Can you hear you? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is John and I live in Anatolia. And after listening to all the comments here, one thing that's shocking to me is the lack of positives. All the previous callers have already mentioned the negatives. Negatives for the residents, such as potentially lowering our home values, schools overcrowding. Negatives for the HOA, clubhouse amenities, overcrowding in our parking, policing we already paid for. Negatives for future residents even, near high speed traffic. The affordable housing wouldn't be near a public transport. There's a lack of nearby medical facilities for the seniors. There's negatives for the city. You're talking about two to $5 million in funding, maybe donating a parcel. I'm just wondering where all the positives? Maybe the developers could speak to that. The developers know that there'll be a lot of opposition to these projects, but they may not, they must not have had any strong rebuttals in this situation if they don't even care to show up. Could this possibly be built in an area that has positives? So far, two of the other callers have mentioned studies where affordable housing increases values in low income neighborhoods and decreases crime. Wouldn't that be a better option than Anatolia? People do need an affordable place to live. We're not saying that they don't. We're only saying that this is not the right location for this project. There has to be a better spot for it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrew.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Andrew. I'm a homeowner here in Anatolia. Thank you for giving the time to share some of my thoughts today. I think the affordable housing idea is a great, great idea to have seniors mixed in in the neighborhood, to have affordable housing for people to live. Those are good things. Those are great things. But much like a house needs a foundation to stand upon before it can be built, communities need infrastructure. Infrastructure is definitely an issue in this area. I think some people have spoken to that already. Especially with services, public services, but also essential businesses such as grocery stores. Infrastructure is significantly cheaper for government to develop when there's lots of open land, when things are undeveloped. Infrastructure is significantly more expensive to develop once an area is already, has a lot of density, a lot of houses. I think that's kind of just a basic thing. An example of this will be Grantline. I think a lot of people are familiar with Grantline. There's thousands and thousands of homes being put into Grantline. And Grantline is a pretty heavily overburdened road as it is. It's going to cost the, it's a shared area. I think City Road Grove, County Sacramento's got some there. That's going to be a massive cost for them to expand Grantline to the road that it should be today, at least two lanes in each direction. So this is kind of a practical example. They're going to have to wipe out houses. How does this connect back to everything over here? Well, we are lacking a lot of infrastructure. And developers have a pretty great history of paying off a lot of expenses on residents. I think you've seen over the last 20 years, a big shift through lobbying for developers to avoid costs that they would normally be taking on, passing them off as Melrose. A lot of residents here have shared their thoughts on that. Melroes are fine. I signed up for that too, but we're not seeing those services. Other issues is developers are not actually interested in the community, lest they show up and say otherwise. But we don't have the ability to evaluate that today. So I think that's been covered. But here's an example now of Anatolia that the developers here made a big mistakes on. The houses over here in my little area, the trash cans don't even fit through the fence. We have no way to We have no way to put the trashcans on the side of our houses or the backyards. They don't fit. That was something that was approved plan by the city. What else? Well, we had patches of grass that are literally five feet by seven feet long in some of the townhomes. They planted oak trees there. Everybody knows how big oak trees go. The developers screwed that up too. And guess who paid the bill? The community. Parking's already issued. I'm not even going to go into that. But, um, infrastructure, we need more public transit. Um, my roommates here complain all the time that, uh, they have no way to get to their retail jobs, um, after 5:00 PM. There's literally one or two buses that run and they have no way to get back home. Um, if you leave here at 7:00 AM to take public transit, it takes forty minutes minimum to get to the freeway going straight up Sunrise. These are not conducive things that are really going to be helping out our community members that we want to see here. These aren't things that are going to be helping out our elderly who already have issues getting around. Um, we want to see those, I think we want to see a lot of these infrastructure things addressed. Um, there's already thousands and thousands of homes already being added to the area, but we're not seeing more schools, we're not seeing more grocery stores. When I first moved here three years ago, there was no grocery store. The Rayleigh's wasn't even here. So that, that's like literally less than two years old. Um, where are people going to shop? Um, residential, essential businesses is a definite concern for anybody living here, whether they're low-income or not. Enforcement attention, I think we, a lot of people back go, there's not a lot of enforcement attention out here. We have a lot of illegal fishing. Um, I call a lot for that kind of stuff because I kind of care about my environment. There's a lot of pollution coming on Sunrise. I never see any enforcement of a lot of our commercial vehicles where they have stuff flying off of them. I pick up trash every time I walk around my community.
Andrew, your time is up.
Thank you for your time. Those are my points and, uh, have a good evening.
The next speaker is Nazir.
Good evening. How are you doing today? Thank you, thank you for the time. I'll just be brief.
Thank you, Nazir. Go ahead.
Uh, just a pointed clarification for myself before I make my comments. Uh, if Mr. Heiser can clarify, are the senior cottages also rentals or are they going to be for sale?
Just so you know, at this time, we, we don't really have any idea. It was just, I, he, he mused with it. So it's not really even a concept.
Okay, thank you. So my comments, my comments will be brief. Um, I agree with the fact that affordable housing is needed in the city, and I applaud the city council for taking the steps to try to, um, investigate, uh, portions of the city that can be, uh, available for such a project. Um, I take the position of a lot of my, um, residents, um, here in Anatolia that, um, there's a lot of, uh, potential, um, negatives for the project to be Anatolia, um, as a resident and a homeowner. Um, but I'm not clear as to, not going to stand that there's no actual plan now. I'm not clear as to whether the residents of this affordable housing project or program will be residents of Anatolia or whether it be a subdivision of Anatolia. Um, and the reason why I make, make that comment is because, um, I'm originally from the East Coast and I grew up in what people call the projects. And, uh, for those who may not know, the, the process of being allowed to live in the projects, you have to go through a housing authority, and it's a very rigorous proj- uh, process. And one of the things about going through that process is that, um, it's, it's a kind of comfort that people living in that building, uh, are maybe in a similar circumstance, or maybe not in similar circumstances yourself because that the, the rent goes according to your income level. However, you can have somebody making a hundred thousand dollars and living in the projects, they're just paying the rent based on their salary. What I'm concerned about is, uh, one, the city of Rancho Cordova being prepared to serve as a potential housing authority to be able to, uh, screen potential residents of any, uh, affordable housing, uh, program they have, but in particular in the area where it may be a subdivision of a planned community. Because one of the things that ends up happening and I'm afraid of, for the sake of, uh, the potential residents and the homeowners of Rancho Cordova and also Anatolia is that if things go wrong with the housing of a particular family, then they blame Anatolia for the mishap or for the misdeed, not the process or the housing authority or maybe what, what caused the, the problem in the first place. So, um, I'm just concerned, there's a lot of, um, unanswered questions. But I do understand that this is at the beginning phase of considerations. So I just want the council to seriously consider, uh, the potential impact of potentially doing more harm than good, uh, with this project being placed in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Ruben. Ruben, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Ruben Romero. I live out here in Anatolia. I've been out here since two thousand seven when the market crashed and a lot of, uh, neighbors left their homes. And I would walk up and down the street mowing lawns, sweeping sidewalks, raking the leaves out of the gutter so we wouldn't have flooding. And I got to know my neighbors really, really well. And I can guarantee you that most of the, uh, neighbors in my area would not approve of the project that you're, uh, proposing. I would hope that the city would look into other areas, especially, especially in International Drive and, um, Zimpendale. There's a lot of opportunities out there for this type of project. But here, where you're proposing, that area is, um, highly congested. That's where the, the children are dropped off from school. A lot of parents go there to pick up their kids. That's a very unsafe area, and we've had issues in the past where, uh, kids are almost hit by cars because they're trying to hook up with their parents, and there's like a ton of buses that go through there. So I wouldn't want, um, more traffic there, more issues to, to, to come up there that we could avoid by avoiding this project. I love Rancho Cordova and I love this community, Anatolia. I'm also on the board and I represent District D here, which is, um, um, more, uh, the houses are a little bit more expensive. And I also sit on the, uh, uh, committee for ho- for homeowners to improve their homes. And the passion that the homeowners have in following the association rules to improve their homes and the work and the months required to create a plan to make their home beautiful. And now you're talking about bringing in this project that, uh, as, uh, other Anatolia and community members have pointed out in their, these studies that they've read, will bring down the values of our home. And so I, for myself, I found it offensive and, and kind of disrespectful that the developer did not have the time to show up and talk to us regarding any kind of proposal, regarding how level, high-level it is. I'm very busy dropping off my kids at their activities and trying to find time to listen to the proposal and to provide my feedback.
Ruben, your time is up.
I think the developer can also have the courtesy to also provide time to answer our question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
That's all the public comment that we have for this item. Thank you.
All right. Uh, all right, let's go ahead. And Siri, you're up. What do you think?
So, um, affordable housing is absolutely needed, um, in our city. Um, we have a lot of American households that spend more than half their income just to keep a roof over their heads. So, uh, first of all, you know, these are hard-working people trying to earn a good livelihood, not just for themselves, but a good, stable environment for their kids. Um, so that said, you know, there's this misconception about affordable, uh, housing. I'd like to remove that right out of the bat. Um, well, I believe, uh, that this location, though, is not ideally suited for the proposed purpose. Um, given that we already know, um, the schools are overburdened, there is no nearby medical facilities. Um, and like one, uh, among the many things that mention, you know, that particular area is where, uh, the school buses drop off and pick up kids. So that's actually going to make matters worse in terms of, uh, safety. Um, this, again, is for people that want to, um, work, uh, and there's, so there are no re- offices close by, like they mentioned, there's only like a Rayleigh's or, you know, there's a strip mall that's hardly, um, anything, um, more for people to walk or close by. So I don't believe this is the ideal location for the purpose that the developer has provided. So my recommendation is not to move forward, uh, with this proposal at this time and find another location for, uh, affordable living. Can you hear me, Garrett?
I can. Sorry. I was, uh, I was waiting. Would any of my other, my councilmembers like to comment on this? I don't like to be the last one. Okay. Go ahead, David.
All right. Um, you know, what I heard and what's really nice to hear is so much love for, uh, community. You know, that's not frankly something we as a council have heard out of Anatolia before, frankly, for just lack of opportunity. I think probably, uh, ten years ago, eight years ago, we did, uh, public sessions down there and, uh, had, you know, y'all come kind of meetings, you know, three hundred people crowded in the, in the gym at, uh, Sunrise Elementary. But we haven't done that kind of a process in a while. So it's really nice to hear from so many people from Anatolia. I really, uh, I really appreciated that. Um, it's obvious we need, uh, community discussion about this and other issues in Anatolia to be sure that they are being, being heard. Uh, that whole area of Sunrise Douglas has, you know, and will have, a ton of change coming. There is, uh, as development moves on, this is, this is the nature of it. Change happens. It's uncomfortable. Uh, it's also exciting and it's beneficial to people who live there, but there is also the upset side of any kind, anytime there's a change, someone is not going to be, not going to be happy about it. Uh, for example, there are, right now, being processed, very large senior communities planned in the, uh, in the adjacent developments to what's already on the ground in, uh, in the Sunrise Douglas area. So, um, there's a lot of discussions tonight about whether medical facilities are close enough. And, you know, interestingly, we have been working on that for, well, Linda, since incorporation, I suppose, one way or another, trying to garner more medical facilities for Rancho Cordova in general. Because, uh, the only, as you know, the only hospital we have is the VA. That is limited population. There are some UC Davis facilities here and some Kaiser facilities here. But we are definitely undervalued with respect to, to, uh, medical facilities and medical offices. But nonetheless, we have hundreds of, uh, units in each of these developments coming forward that will be senior communities, uh, just to the east, probably of most of our, uh, most of our callers now are the south. So my guess is that'll change, uh, over time. We probably will have more medical facilities out here because they will follow the business, and if we have a large senior population, that will drive more investment from those concerns. So it's, but it's items like that that I think we probably need to talk about more. Uh, I'd also like to have a better understanding. I heard an awful lot about crime. And, you know, frankly, anytime we look at crime stats, we see very, very, very little activity, uh, out of Anatolia come, and, and the Sunrise Douglas neighborhoods compared to, um, you know, the region as a whole. It, it appears to be an exceptionally safe place. And if there's this much anxiety about crime, I'm sort of worried that we're, we're missing something there. Um, so that, that I think, uh, certainly deserves some further discussion. Um, let's see. I think that's what I will, uh, I will leave it with for now. There is a, there's a lot of comments here about there are no jobs, and that, that's, uh, that's kind of confusing. I don't know, I don't know what the presumption is about, about jobs. Rancho Cordova is home to more private sector jobs than any other community in Northern California. So, uh, I think one of the significant reasons why we're successful as a destination for new housing is the enormous concentration of jobs that we have. I don't know if the presumption here is that, that folks who might live in this housing wouldn't have transportation and would have to walk, uh, to the job. But, uh, even this proposal, which isn't even a proposal, but this concept that was thrown on the table here tonight is not very low or extremely low income. It's, it's moderate income and, and seniors. And those folks would all have most likely automobiles in order to consider living there. So I don't, I don't quite get the, um, the connection to jobs because as I, as I know, we're a jobs-rich community, extraordinarily jobs-rich community, uh, to the point that all of our colleagues around the region and the state are probably jealous of our, our jobs-to-housing ratio. Uh, so with that, I think I will pass it on to my colleagues and look forward to, uh, further more discussions with the Sunrise Douglas communities.
Oh, I'd like to build on what David just said. Um, it's probably important to remember that this, uh, area was originally planned and, um, approved by Sacramento County, uh, only, truly only about four or five months before we voted to incorporate. And originally, there was absolutely nothing to serve this community. It was just like, um, antelope or vineyard, um, where you have scads of homes. And oh, by the way, over here on the corner of Sunrise and Douglas, you could have two shopping centers. And that would be it, to serve everybody between Sunrise and Grantline, all the way down to the Jackson Highway. And that was ridiculous. And so we had to add additional services, opportunities for, um, commercial, uh, zoning for retail, uh, zoning for, um, offices back into this area. And as David says, ultimately, they will come. And it may not be right this minute, but they will come. Um, it is important to remember that this particular area that is under discussion is already zoned for multifamily. It's zoned for RD twenty, which is not a very large density, all things considered. Um, so with the people, bless their hearts, the people who feel that this is rural. On the other hand, ultimately, there will be more apartments in this area. And, um, there is higher density being proposed for other areas, um, other parcels throughout this area. Um, overcrowding of the schools is a problem. And we know that Elk Grove Unified has additional schools on the drawing board. Um, are they building them as quickly as we'd like? Probably not. The seniors' school went through exactly the same thing. The Elk Grove School District invented what they called hopscotch schools. They, they did a whole map of it. So basically, when they needed a school, what they would do is, is construct administration buildings, and then they would bring in a bunch of portable. That's why they call it hopscotch. And then as the population of that particular neighborhood solidified, then they build permanent buildings and they pick up those portables and they move them to the next location where they had those administrative offices. And that would be, that would be the school over there. It's also the reason that Elk Grove is, is one of the very few school districts that's actually got its own Melrose. Um, that is not a common thing for, for school districts in, in California. But Elk Grove, that's how Elk Grove finances their construction to try to keep up with the demand. And obviously, we are a classic example of the fact that it's not working. It really, it really stresses their capabilities. Um, one of the, some of the people who are on this call tonight understand that it is critical that Rancho Cordova be able to keep up with the state's demand that we build affordable housing. And it's not always going to be in the most ideal location, but it is really critical that it be spread throughout the community. It is the ultimate in mixed-income neighborhoods. And, um, I can tell you that the kids who, uh- And I can tell you that the kids who live at Baker Community Campus benefit from going to school at Navigator Elementary as they get an opportunity to interact with everybody else who is a normal little, who is a little kid living a somewhat normal little kid life. And it's not just the challenged lives that these kids live at home. I'll never forget when one of my granddaughters was in kindergarten over there and in spring, she and I would walk the dog over to kindergarten and the little kids were so agog. Some of you remember Jake Senior. The little kids were so agog of Jake because he was a nice, sweet, fuzzy dog. He was not a giant dog with big teeth that would eat you if you came close to it. So, you know, there's pros and cons on both sides, but it's, it's just really important. I, I would think that a priority in this location could definitely be seniors. We have had so many people in Rancho Cordova who are the founders of the city who have gotten older and they've had to leave Rancho Cordova when they could no longer take care of their houses because there was no senior opportunity for them, for them to live here in, in senior housing, where they didn't have to paint the outside of the house or take care of the lawn. Those kinds of things are really critical when people get to be older and don't move around well or don't have the income to go out and buy what is ultimately going to be a relatively expensive house in these areas that, that everybody has mentioned. Lesser hearts, whether it's a Lennar or Keighley Nannian, these are going to be expensive houses because you're paying for, you're paying the market rate price. And we in Rancho Cordova are very, very much in the same position that we were in in two thousand four, five, and six, when an organization grew up to try to insist that Rancho Cordova remain affordable. If you all read the list of sales prices that's in the Sacramento Bee on the weekends, there are houses being sold that are well above four hundred thousand. And we've got resale homes that are now selling well above six hundred thousand. And we are losing affordability that everybody thinks we have simply because of the market. So from my perspective, we need to continue to look at this. There are housing plans, affordable housing plans that are adopted with, with the new neighborhoods that are being adopted. And I'm not sure where this one rates on, on that particular, in that particular process. But it's also the reason that people can point to Rio de Loro and say that they have an affordable housing plan because they do. And so does Sun Creek. So there's definitely going to be affordable housing east of Sunrise regardless of what people think. It's just a matter of ensuring that it is spread out through the community, that it is balanced, that it is of high design and looks good and has management processes in place that ensure that it's an asset to the community without a detriment. Garrett.
Thank you, Linda. Hey, Don, do you care if I go and then you can go after me?
Um, that's fine.
Okay. So I'm just gonna say that I'm definitely an advocate for affordable housing, but we have to think about what is smart for the community and how it affects us as it gets put in place. And I'm disappointed that we're not talking about anything else, but, you know, I support affordable housing when we have someone that would want to talk about it. So, yeah. Okay, Don, you're up.
So, okay. So a lot's been said here. So let me, and I think, thank you, David and Linda. I think you each maybe dispelled a few myths that have been shared tonight. But I want to start with this idea of schools being burdened in the Elk Grove Unified area, of which three of your council members now live in this community, including myself. And so some of us meet with Elk Grove Unified on a regular basis. I, I think I shared that earlier in my comments that we hadn't met this year, but we're meeting on a bimonthly basis now. Prior to COVID, the conversations with Elk Grove Unified were almost entirely talking about where's the next elementary school? When are we gonna try to get another, or get a junior high in the neighborhood? And when are we gonna get a high school in the neighborhood? And so I want to be really bluntly clear with the residents that are concerned about the impact right now on the two elementary schools that we have. We are going to need four to five elementary schools built or imminently being built in order to even entertain the idea of building the high school. We have worked with Elk Grove Unified. Personally, I have been working with them for about five years on an idea and backing them away because the only way that they've ever built high schools is to build a junior high and a high school at the exact same time. So they need to have all of the population for the massive hundred fifty million dollar high school. They need nearly all of those students ready to, to move into the high school before they were building. And we have negotiated with them very hard and been trying to work with them on coming up with an infrastructure package in some way. I don't, I don't even know if we can get there and I'll explain that in a minute. But we have gotten them to actually entertain the idea of building the middle school first and operating it as a seven through twelve element, or junior high high school site and building a smaller site and then someday in the future, building the high school site. Something that was unimaginable for them to even entertain eight years ago when I got on the council. But what happened with Sunrise a few years ago, and my son was attending there, when it got to like seventeen hundred students, that's when they finally had enough students to have another elementary school. We have to have that same event at Sunrise again, at Margarita again, and at the new Sunridge School that someday may be coming. And for the people that live in that neighborhood, you know where that site is. But then we still need another site on top of that. And somebody referenced that senior development that we, that we greenlighted, the second one, and that actually lost us an elementary school in that neighborhood. So the more senior developments that come on stage and everybody that here that is comfortable with senior affordable housing, which I get it, that doesn't contribute to the, to the school population and other things like that, that also delays how long it's gonna take to get a junior high or a high school in this neighborhood. And again, we've negotiated and worked with the, the superintendent and the school board to entertain some of these ideas of building something smaller to accommodate the, the fact that we have so many of our kids having to go so far away to go to high school and junior high now and entertain that idea and to look at a site at Sun Creek, which is just kind of southeast of, of Koala Ranch as the site. And we've literally had them say out loud that, you know, over the two sites, one could have been in the county or one could be in Rancho. They said the one in Rancho is probably where this is going. But the biggest roadblock we ran into in the last year and a half is, actually, I would take it back. I want to say it was in the primary of this year. So this was the March election. The state didn't pass, this state did not pass Prop thirteen, which was the school bond that Elk Grove Unified and all growing school districts rely on for half of the construction cost for new schools. So that next Sunridge Elementary School, that next elementary school after that, and this high school, fifty percent of the capital to build it isn't there. And until voters put another ballot measure, another bond measure on the ballot and pass it, there's not the financing to even build these facilities. But to think that more kids in our neighborhood are overburdening in our elementaries, that's exactly what has to happen in order to get the high school and the middle school. So I want to be very clear about that. You know, yes, I, I was an affordable housing developer. I have been an affordable housing advocate in this region for many, many years, including chairing the homeless and affordable housing cap to cap committee for the Metro Chamber. I serve on the homeless advisory council for the county. We don't have enough affordable housing in this region. We don't even have enough affordable housing in this city. At current levels, the public housing and affordable housing stock in the United States accounts for fifteen percent of the demand of the market of the people that would qualify for affordable housing. That is why we have a homeless crisis. That's why we have a housing crisis in California. Is this the best site in the city to be putting this? Probably not. And it's really why I started off my comments was, without understanding what the developer is asking for and what they're proposing, I have nothing to evaluate. If I look at the projects, and I shouldn't even say the word projects, and that was even used here. Well, let me, let me, we already have developments in the planning that we've set aside funding that we're anticipating additional resources needing to go there. One is next to our civic center that is likely to be some sort, in my opinion, is going to be some sort of mixed-income multifamily development of some sort. There has been an idea of having some for sale, single-family homes there, but there is going to be something there. We have a youth center that we're looking at doing tenant improvements and opening in the next year or so on, on both boards. And then we still have the crossings, which Stefan, what, is in ten, it's ten years in, in planning. It started before I, I was ever on council. That is still there and we're trying to breathe life back into that. There's a Taco, a Veterans Village phase two. So to me, it's ranking this project amongst a bunch of other things. But to Linda's point, this is zoned multifamily. And to David's point, and I would say as the person on this council that is probably the most in touch with affordable housing law and lobbying, there is a very real possibility in the next handful of years that California turns multifamily development and even single-family development into buy right multifamily development. And a project, and a development like this, we wouldn't have authority to deny it. In this case, the developer's asking probably for land. Again, we don't know that because they're not here. And that's kind of unfortunate because what I do know of this company, they tend to be a fairly reputable company across this region. I didn't know that they did this much, or that they worked in affordable housing that much. I know it was a for-profit developer and construction company. But, you know, in this case, there, there may be an ask for land, there may be an ask for subsidy directly from the city. Those are really where I hang my hat on. Does it make sense to put that here or to put that something somewhere closer to transitory and development, that's closer to, to light rail, that's closer to the business part, that's closer to other amenities than to put it down here? To David's point, I don't think it's that far from jobs. Everyone's far away from a medical facility in this city. As somebody who has had both of my children birthed in another county, in Placer County, because we're members of Kaiser and that's where you go. And so it's, you know, tho- those aren't necessarily where I'm hanging my hat on this art, on, on the evaluation of this. But I guess what I, what I'm, what I'm trying to get across is there's still a lot of struggle for this neighborhood to finally get to the point of being a whole neighborhood, right? We're all frustrated at how far our kids have to go to go, to go to high school. Mine is two years away from being in, in that middle school. And yeah, the buses are a problem, but the buses are gonna have to double before we get what we want, right? Which is, you know, and, and it's really interesting to have, lived down there, and again, I, you know, we started out this conversation, I lived in Lincoln Village when I got on the, on the city council. We started off at a liquor store over there and I did a stint up in the north and the head sun river and I've, I've been in this neighborhood for five years and I love it. And I lived across the street, you know, in the villas to this development. I know exactly where this is. I live right behind the clubhouse. I've heard this from my neighbors before, you know, this concern that this, that this thing is, is zoned multifamily. You know, if it's not this develop, developer, you know, it's gonna, it's still gonna probably be multifamily and ultimately, we may not have the authority to stop whatever comes next. So those are all things that we, that we should really be considering, but I, you know, I think at this point, without a real proposal in front of me, Micah and Stefan and Cyrus, I have nothing to support except to say that, you know, our residents that, that showed up tonight are very clear that this is not something that they're interested in. But again, I, I'm, I'm being brutally honest, that in two or three years, the state legislature may take any, I mean, the only, the only thing here that would be a variable in the future is if they're asking for the land and a subsidy. But the zoning is completely, could, could be completely taken away from local jurisdictions. And that bill has gotten within a hairs of passing the legislature multiple times over the last six or seven years. And it's just a matter of time before they do it. And, and, and the sad thing is, is, you know, while we're talking about this development and this site today, as a community, we have more affordable housing units than, you know, per capita than most communities in this region. And we've advocated putting in more. But it's communities in the Bay Area that zone everything, you know, single-family and basically make it impossible to have identities that are going to, you know, strip the decisions from local jurisdictions like ours that have been doing the right thing to a large extent. So with that, yeah, I mean, I, I, I see no reason to move forward because we, we don't really have an advocate in this project here to talk about it. You know, we don't have the Housing Alliance, we don't have the developer, we don't have other people here to talk about, you know, what could have been the positives of a given project. So it, it's very clear that, that we just should move forward today.
So at that point, guys, I'm gonna go ahead, since there's actually no vote to have today because there's no actually here, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next one. I want to thank all the residents that showed up. Thank you for your opinions. Thank you for taking the time. I know it took a long time, you know, we, and we're gonna go ahead and go on to the Great Plates, move on to that one. So at this point, can I go ahead and have the city clerk announce the next subject matter?
Great Plates Delivered 2021 Program Update and Discussion.
Well, I think that's Stefan. So good afternoon, Councilman Mayor. Really, I think this item tonight is really intended to update the council on the program and the approach that's been taken. And really, what I really want to do before Stefan digs into the, to the, to the update is really thank the, you know, city staff team that has worked on this. You have a great cross collaborative team with, you know, Lori Ann Alm, Stefan Heisler, Laura Fickell, Matt Buehlend, and Alexis Diaz, who have all played a pretty, a very strong role in many aspects of the, of the Great Plates program. And really, this wouldn't have happened, it wouldn't have been successful, except for the staff time and resources and effort of that team that have, that have worked on keeping this program going and working with the restaurants and the seniors and really moving this, this program along. So really, I just wanted to thank that, that team and the, the good cross collaboration of that group that's meeting the needs of both the residents and also the, the business community. So with that, I'll hand it over to Stefan to present the Great Plates program.
All right. Now that we moved on to this item, I'll take off my disguise. I am the real Stefan Heisler, Housing Manager for the City of Rancho Cordova. We have a presentation coming up and then I'll run through the slides. This will be a pretty quick presentation and then there's just one small opportunity for direction from the city council on this item, but if we don't hear anything, then we'll move right along. All right. So again, just a really quick program overview. This was a program launched by Cal OES in partnership with FEMA and locally administered by city staff. It is an economic stimulus to our local food service providers during the stay-at-home orders and, and the broader COVID orders for socially distancing and maintaining safe precautions during this time. So the program provides three home-delivered meals per day. We were at seven days per week. We've dropped that down to five days a week, starting late December after Christmas. Just to continue the program into the new year, we do expect it to be several more months before FEMA would probably end the program. Seniors aged sixty-five and older and adults aged sixty to sixty-five at high risk from COVID nineteen are eligible for the program. So some quick program statistics, we started on May five. The program is currently extended through February sixth of this year. Extensions are granted in thirty-day increments. We've served approximately eighty-four thousand five hundred meals as of today with an average of actually just over twenty-three hundred average meals per week. We've served over one hundred and eighty-three unique residents and currently are serving actually one hundred and fifty-nine participants per day. Seventeen local food service providers have benefited and there are actually eleven currently active food service providers, all providing meal deliveries. We've supported approximately fifty-five local jobs from this program alone. We've provided over one point eight million dollars of economic stimulus to local businesses in Rancho Cordova at a rate of about twenty thousand dollars per business per month. So going into 2021, we just want to share our strategy. So going into twenty twenty-one, we just want to share our strategy for the program going forward. Back in September of last year, council approved contract extensions for ten restaurants up to two hundred thousand dollars. Three restaurants have now reached that limit this week in January and have termed out of the program. But in order to spread the program benefit across the business community, we're not asking for, requesting an additional contract extension at this time for participating restaurants. Really, our strategy is to look for new restaurants to then fill in where the old restaurants are, are leaving. There are some other alternatives if the council desires. We could look at keeping all the restaurants in the program and come back to you with a additional contract extension. And we can also have a conversation about if there's any desired limits of the number of senior participants or if we can continue to expand that. So the fiscal impact for this program, the total program costs through May thirty-first are expected to be, we're, we're trying to project through at least the next quarter or two, just depending on what we think, you know, the window would be for FEMA to continue extending the program. But through May thirty-first, we expect total cost would probably be around two point nine million dollars. Of that, close to ninety-four percent is reimbursable from FEMA and Cal OES. So really, there's just the six point two five percent local cost share requirement. And we anticipate that would probably be around a hundred and ninety thousand dollars through May thirty-first, and that's since program inception. And a hundred thousand of dollars of that would have been between May and December of last year. So really ninety thousand dollars going forward in this year. And if, if, if it appears that FEMA would extend the program beyond May sixth, twenty twenty-one, we would be returning to council with another update before then and, and some future discussion about probably the, the picture of the restaurants at that time and what we want to do. So at this time, we are working with FEMA and Cal OES to receive reimbursement as quickly as we can from FEMA. We've gotten about three hundred and five thousand dollars back already and we're continuing to file project extensions and expedited reimbursement requests as we can or as Cal OES is willing to work with us. So one of the other things we're trying to consider here as we think about the potential end of the program, I mean, hopefully in a good way, right? But we've begun conversations with Meals on Wheels for a transition program once the Great Plate program ends. So Meals on Wheels has already submitted a CDBG CV Round Three Grant Application to the City. Spoiler alert, but we will be coming to council probably, I think, at the February second meeting to consider the CDBG CV Round Three Grants. And this could be one of those, or this, this will be one of those applications. Now, the transition program would still use local restaurants. It would include fewer meals per week because we are trying to transition away, kind of off the program. And it would have more narrow eligibility criteria for seniors to meet the CDBG requirements and would probably look to last between two to five months. At this time, we don't really have an accurate picture of when the program would end and when this transition would begin. But we do expect it probably will, will happen sometime in twenty twenty-one. And we'll be watching the indicators, of course, like the state's colored tiers, infection rates and social distancing guidelines to have an idea of when that transition program should begin. And that's the end of the presentation. Thank you very much. I know it's late, but happy to receive any direction or discussion as needed.
Thank you, Stefan. Thanks for all your hard work you put into this. So.
Are you looking for some directions? Continue, uh, co- continue to figure out how to, um, how to move, how to keep this program going?
So, so as an issue, yeah, the strategy right now is to look at new, bringing on new restaurants as we reach the contract limits with the existing restaurants. I mean, that's really the only question that we have for the council is if, if we'd like to come back with an extension request for some of the restaurants that have already been participating for multiple months, or if we should continue to look.
So Stefan, I'm just gonna start out by saying you guys are doing a great job and this program is critical of keeping our businesses. I'm interested in extending the ones that are using it and looking for other ones at the same time. I don't want to, let's, let's not rock that boat. We need to keep these businesses alive and this is that whole measure R initiative that everyone needs to come to on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh that we're talking about next week. But I, I am not interested, I want to re-up it for the, the restaurants that are doing it and go find new ones and see what we can do to help wrap them in as well.
So can I ask a couple of questions about how it works? And I'm sorry if you, if you covered it, I was kind of moving some things around. But, so the, the, correct me if I'm wrong, this is FEMA funding? This, this a pass through, so basically we spend it, they're reimbursing us for it?
That's correct, yeah. Seventy-five percent FEMA and about nineteen percent state.
The most of it, okay. Is there any way, you know, we, we just passed Measure R. We've talked about that we wanted to figure out ways to, to work, to do economic development, especially in the short term, COVID response, economic development, redevelopment, trying to, you know, bounce forward, all these, all these lovely terms that everybody's been talking about, right? But is there any way to scale this up that, that would make sense? Like, is there gonna be a cap at some point as to how much we can spend or what?
There's no cap, it's really just the comfort level with that local cost share and, and the cost outlay until we are reimbursed.
Yeah, I mean, I, and we've spent how much so far, a, a million, two million?
We're at about one point eight million, one point nine million. And then we probably would escalate to two point nine million through May thirty-first. I think if we were to add, if we were to add and keep all the restaurants, it would probably be a little bit higher than that.
So I guess my, my challenge to you and to staff in general would be, what would it take to triple the number of people being fed? Because I, Garrett, I, I know you're super passionate about the businesses and so am I, but like, is there any other more effective economic development tool right now than keeping restaurants open by feeding hungry people? That can't afford to buy meals?
I think if I may just.
No, I know, I guess, I guess I'm trying, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out like, like, why, why am I not telling you go find ten times the people? And even if.
I, I think that's really where the, where the supply issue is, right? So there's only so many seniors that are on, that are part of the program now. So just adding restaurants and wanting to add more restaurants, we don't necessarily include the amount of money being spent. We're just serving those same a hundred and fifty seniors, you know, as part of the program. We have, we actually have been adding seniors and adding, you know, delivery to the mix. So I think the, the probably the, the question is not about adding restaurants, well, we actually need to add.
No, 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 Micah, that's exactly what I'm saying.
You actually need additional seniors in order to be able to expand the program to the additional restaurants.
That's, Micah, that's exactly what I'm asking for. It, it's not, to me, Garrett, I think you addressed the, the restaurant. I'm asking you, what do you need to significantly grow the people fed? Right? And is that staff? Is that a marketing budget? Like, what is, what would it take to spend more of this money? Because again, like, when you just said, it's a no-brainer, like, like, if we're talking economic development, all for that, that's great, we want to save jobs. But I, I want to say Joe Biden's about to pro- uh, uh, propose expanding SNAP or, or, it's not cannabis, it's SNAP, by like forty million people than it is today, right? Because of the number of people that are, that are, that are food insecure. So I guess I'm, I'm asking, we have resources, right? We have new resources that we haven't necessarily decided what we're gonna do with. Is some of those resources assist you in finding, is it more seniors? Or can we go back and figure out like, who doesn't qualify for SNAP but we know has lost their job? And can we figure out how we can assist them for this year or the next six months or something like that? But I'm just, I, I, I'm asking, how creative could you be and what kind of resources? And you don't have to answer that today, but I'm kind of challenging you to like, as, as we talk about the budget over the next, we're gonna start next week, I, I would challenge staff to figure out what would you need, if it's a hundred and fifty seniors today, what would you need to figure out how to get to three thousand seniors? And what would that cost? And if it's gonna be reimbursed by like ninety something percent, like us spending the ten percent and the marketing to figure out how to do that and some hours, is that more people with like Lori Ann's team and neighborhood services and community engagement to figure out, like, getting out?
We don't bring on the teachers and stuff to go find the community that we can help feed. Yeah, I, I, there are, you know, certain qualifying factors for the seniors and Stefan probably can knows what those are. But I think what I'm hearing, you know, from the group is a really an interest in, you know, doing what we can to actually get additional users into the program to then expand to the restaurants. And we can, I mean, we could come back, but I think that's really kind of general direction that we needed. We can figure out how to do that, what that means from a budget standpoint. But I think that was important direction we're hearing from you as far as the program itself.
Well, yeah, I guess, so the, the way I evaluate this, I just want you to understand how I, I was thinking about this. You know, we've done this, this one round of micro grants with the, with the chamber, or maybe we've done two, to small businesses. We probably need to think about that when we're starting to talk about the budget next week anyways. But is there, literally, is there anything more effective? I mean, giving grants to restaurants and employers in general to keep them employed, that's awesome. But if we could buy their food and give it to somebody who's hungry, that's food insecure, like, to me, it's the most effective economic development idea I've ever heard of in my life, right? Keep our restaurants selling food, right? We're buying it and we're, and we're feeding people that can't afford to, to, to be fed. It just seems like, like the easiest equation in my life. And if, and if somebody's picking up eighty to ninety percent of the cost, I, I, there's not a lot of things I can think of that are more effective in dealing with economic development and food insecurity.
It's a no-brainer.
Thank you. So, yeah, great, great job, but I just want to see more people be fed. And I think, Garrett, obviously.
It, it is more of a just resource issue, it's not really money, it's, it's just figuring out there are enough people and time to actually do the, do the work. So I think more than happy to, to work on that, I think, as far as, you know, as, as effort. What that might mean is, as far as effort looking forward is, there might be some contracts that come for extensions and approvals to, to, to grow some of those numbers. But ultimately, I think it's direction to really try to expand the program to as many people as possible that qualify.
Yeah, and Micah, and I would just say that kudos, I know there's a lot of restaurants that are involved in this or, or food delivery companies, but I know the, the Mandarins, which really set up that, that kitchen to support a bingo hall of some sort. And all of a sudden, they're, they're one of the largest producers and providers of these meals. And I know Brookfield's has done an enormous amount of work here. So thank you to them and everyone else that agreed to participate.
Well, and I, I will highlight just, it's not just the restaurants and it's, you know, we have the next round, actually a contract includes Wacky Tacky as, as a. There's even those who are figuring out the food service, you know, to, to be able to participate, to keep them going.
Well, and, and Micah, even something like that, like, and I think Garrett and I were talking about this. You know, a Wacky Tacky, I, I want to say Sky High has closed during all of this, like gone away. So the, the Trampoline Center, I believe, closed permanently. But, you know, Wacky Tacky, when it opened, and again, because I have kids of that age, we have birthday parties and stuff there. The fact that we landed the only other one besides Roseville and ours is like triple the size, like, you know, keeping those cool community amenities that can't be used right now because we can't go and be near each other and play with, you know, gym apparatus, stuff like they have at Wacky Tacky or some of these other things, like, these are gonna be big losses if we lose them. And it's taken a long time to land that, that sports complex thing over there and a lot of those businesses haven't been able to operate. And the fact that Wacky Tacky has that, that ability to, you know, have a kitchen and to do all that stuff, like, that, that's a fantastic use of it. And if it keeps them there long enough to get through this and get back to it, it's kind of the same argument around the Children's Museum and why we've worked so hard to try to preserve their skeletons after and all of this. Wacky Tacky's for profit, but I mean, that is an amazing amenity. The families from Eldorado Hills and Folsom and Roseville and Elk Grove and all kinds of places around here at Sacramento come there because of that amenity. And, and there's only two of them and ours is way better than Roseville, just pulling that out.
So, Micah, in terms of, in terms of how to expand the, the program, how to, I mean, I, we all remember that they have to be qualifying seniors. So, but there, there probably are other places where we could sort of mine for people like the, the service clubs and the churches and making sure that we specifically get these notices out to those locations where you might have a collection of seniors who could qualify. So this is a little bit like the, the Naming Rights Committee, you know? We, we should give you a list of, of places that you can go to look for qualifying seniors.
And, and to be really frank, in the short term, when it comes to Measure R, I, I would even be open to the idea of o- opening to the people that don't qualify for this program under whatever the criteria is, figure out what our own criteria might be, where SNAP and other things aren't addressing that need. And we might be able to throw some, you know, some resources for Measure R or something like that for six months or a year. But I mean, that's, that was part of the argument for Measure R was it's gonna be transportation, infrastructure long term. But in the short term, it's going to address COVID response and disaster relief, really, and crisis relief. And, and, you know, there are a lot of people that don't know where their next meal's coming from.
I agree with Donald. Economic development was a major piece of this and if they can do a twofer, take care of food shortages and economic development, this is a big win for us. So like, all we want you to do is quad, quadruple? Quadruple, yeah. Quadruple what you did.
Quadruple.
You got three days.
Oh, Micah, Micah, use other people's money. Right, that's. Use the federal money, use the state money.
Yeah, I, exhaust all of that, I have.
Exhaust all of that.
Absolutely.
Micah, I have a question. Micah, I had a question, sorry. Are, are the additional restaurants identified, like the, the Wacky Tacky? Or you still have scope to identify additional?
I think we're continuing to take on, you know, new restaurants, I think we're adding them continually. So there have been some restaurants who have expressed interest, some, you know, who we've talked to just, for some reason, don't want to participate or just aren't interested. So we're continuing to take additional restaurants. So if you have restaurants that you know of that are being interested, but we've done a pretty good effort to get out there in front of all the restaurants in a variety of ways, so.
Donald, have you sent this to your favorite restaurant, Eighties?
As I'm, as I'm looking at something on their Facebook that they just posted, their fundraiser that they're trying to do. I, I don't know if they're.
Someone go get the Eighties Cafe so Donald has someplace to eat.
I'm pretty sure we've accepted a lot of those lists of the folks that you know.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it, a lot of this comes down to if you have the capacity to do this kind of work. And I mean, when this, when this program rolled out, and trust me, we had a much smoother rollout than Sacramento did when they had this. But the meals that were being prepared by some of the restaurants just didn't, like, the things that they chose, I mean, there was, there were gripes because they were giving bagels and a lot of seniors, you know, have dentures and they can't eat that. And so there, there are all of these things that were just like playing out in social media, especially in Sacramento when they tried to do this, that I think gave a lot of trepidation to a lot of restaurants to do it. And then to go from, you know, really robust sales to no sales to, you have to meet this demand like tomorrow, I think worried a lot of people. So yeah, it's, it, and, and rolling them has been tough for some of them. But some of them, the, I mean, the bigger ones, I mean, Brookfield's, you know, they've got the kitchen, they have the staff, you know, they know how to roll out that meal that fast. Other ones, they just couldn't scale sometimes. But yeah, whether it's, I, I, I don't know if Chris has been approached by this, but I'm guessing Micah goes there enough that he, he talked to him.
So, so Micah, at this point, do you need a decision from us?
Well, I think we've got direction to spend as much of other people's money as we can.
Yeah, always.
Yes.
That should be a standard.
But if it takes them hard, spend more of theirs, I think.
Okay.
Cool.
Garrett.
Yeah, so I, personally, I, I'd really like to hear more, more ideas, I guess next week we'll have the, the workshops or the, the, the visioning sessions or whatever we're doing. But I'd be really interested to hear if there, what kind of resources we can bring to bear to scale this up.
We'll focus on the FEMA part, we'll let that conversation happen when we get to those, those future conversations.
All right, and I think we gave clear vision to my staff, I think they're all aboard. I think that's good. So at this point, can we, council request for future agenda items?
I, I have a, I have a request to adjourn the memory of when we get there.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Sorry, go ahead, Linda.
Go ahead, um.
Donald and I have the same, Donald and I have the same intent.
Okay. So, so, let me go, I.
Go ahead, so you have.
Go ahead, Siri, what do you have, future agenda items?
So the last time we discussed the closing city hall and only going for Zoom because, for the safety of the city clerk and others that are going to be in city hall. But if we have Stacy B. in city hall, I think we should open up that to allow members to come sit in a corner because they're gonna be there anyways.
I'm with Siri.
Yeah, at this point, I, I'm still not comfortable doing that, but if I'm the only one, then fine. But I, I think for, for. But I I think for for now, the technology worked clearly, we saw that the public can engage with us in this way. The only individual that said that he wouldn't do that is because he wouldn't, he wouldn't even try this technology. Um, and I think at at this point, literally, we are, as as far as I know, we are the only government meeting.
So guys, we can, we can bring up a meeting to talk about it, but we can't really discuss it and Adam's looking me the crazy look. So if you'd like to, so it sounds like there's three.
I think this should be an item for for our workshop.
Yeah, we can talk, we can bring it up and talk about it, so there's three. All right, so um.
Mayor Gatewood, can I?
Adjournment, Donald, can you take this one?
Mayor Gatewood, can I get some clarity on twelve point four? Was there a, um, I know that we were going to continue it, was there a a date certain? I know that this is the city attorney's office item, are we bringing it back in two weeks or a month or?
So.
Do a month.
So now, actually, can I, can I make a suggestion, Garrett? Can we bring that back at the next meeting and not have it be the last item, have it be the first discussion item that we have? So that we know that it's not gonna be rushed and it's not gonna be stuck at the end of the meeting? Because if we, if we were prepared, if we were prepared tonight to talk about it, we should be prepared at the next meeting to do it and it should be the absolute first thing that we do.
Especially because the.
Cyrus, can you do that?
Interested in this.
Yes, sir.
Stay up until the pocket night.
Exactly, exactly.
All right, so we'll move it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Stacy.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, so uh, adjournment.
And we all have, we all have the same thing on our minds. We want to be sure that we adjourn tonight in the memory of Adam Gibson, the um, young deputy who was killed yesterday. Um, and it's, as Mindy, as Mindy Russell said, it's 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 his life, it's the life of the canine, but it's also the fact.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound. Enter your participant ID followed by, you have joined the meeting as an attendee and will be muted throughout the meeting.
A thousand people have died from this pandemic and.
I think Donald, uh, what happened, um, as a part of the um, pre-inauguration ceremonies. Um, which are not able to take place in the traditional setting. We have lined the reflecting pool uh, in front of, uh, between the the Washington Monument and the Abraham Lincoln. Memorial with um, four hundred lights to commemorate the four hundred thousand.
Yeah, and actually, if you look at the pictures tonight, it actually runs all the way to the Capitol. It runs all the way up to the stage.
Well, it's really, it's really quite beautiful.
Yeah, so um, but I just wanted to, at least, we can take a moment to reflect in the fact that what miles, what grim milestone that is and hopefully there are brighter days to come.
Amen.
As we adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Good night.
See you, guys.